All right. I'd love to get started. It is 6:03, so I'll call this meeting to order. Let's stand up, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then get started on the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So yeah, I'd love to welcome everybody here tonight. It's great to see a full learning comments. I appreciate all of you being here. We are gonna open up public comment, so we'll do public comment. We'll do it for 20 minutes at this time with the idea that we'll save time for the end with also the option to extend it if it does seem like there's additional public comment. So would you, do you have your?
Yep, I can do it.
Eric will start that.
First, I want to, I want to thank the principal for doing the MTSS evening.
It doesn't project, it just goes to the screen, so they can hear it from home. So you're just gonna have to speak up, Pat, it won't project in the room.
Do you, yeah.
Maybe you could.
Stand to the side.
We can certainly hear you.
Well, could you bring the?
Pat, sorry, can you pull the mic with you so folks at home can hear? Thanks.
So I want to thank the principal.
Please say your name and.
Yeah, Pat Abramis, Tall Pines Drive. We were all given an opportunity to go to the session on MTSS, which is their new methodology here. And the reason I went, part of it was, I have a real issue with hiring the MTS coordinator and all of that. But, but beyond that, I said, if I'm gonna fight something, I should understand it. So I did go to the meeting. There weren't many people here at that meeting. I was surprised at how few parents actually came to that meeting. The other thing, in the last board meeting I was here, I said, I want to know, with all the data that's being collected, I want to know, how private is that information? Where does that information go afterwards? When the kid moves on from elementary school to junior, middle school to high school, what happens to that information? I was looking for that answer. I always said, come to the meeting, come to the meeting, you'll get the answer. Didn't get the answer at that meeting. We, again, the meeting was very frustrating because it was a one-way meeting. We couldn't really ask questions. Without having a dialogue, it's very hard to understand something. And there were a lot of hands going up. They did eventually take a couple of questions, but never asked, you know, we never got to the root of how this all really works. I will tell you, there is, and you can correct me if I remember correctly, each kid, each child is assessed on 70 measures, 70? And it's 500 children. So that's 35,000 data points, 35,000 data points. Then I said to myself, no wonder I need a coordinator with 35,000 data points, alright? Now, this isn't a meeting to talk about this, I'm just saying that I think we've created a overwhelmingly data-driven model here that's so labor-intensive that I don't know if it's really worth it. I think there's ways of modifying it to make it more efficient. And do we have to reassess these, each child, you know, multiple times a year? Wouldn't the beginning of the year be fine, just one? Just evaluate each child and then, then mark your plans for the children. This is anything new. We've had, we've had speech therapists here, we've had, we've had occupational therapists here, we've had other English specialists here, all doing what we're doing now. It's just a different model. We, for Christ's sake, we have teachers, we have 21 professionals in the school that are paid over $100,000. Why aren't they at the vanguard of this? Why aren't they the ones who are assessing their children and saying, you know, I think Johnny has a little problem here? And, you know, and then seek to, and I could tell stories about my own son, you know, 30 years ago, who got the care that he needed from the teacher recognizing something. But anyway, we have this big model and it's a big monster. That's number one. Number two, and that's for a future discussion. I don't see anybody else getting up. One last thought.
One more minute.
We have a, as a district, we have an opportunity. The DEIJ director stepped down. I think the DEIJ director did himself in by his relationship with Black Lives Matter, and that finally caught up to him. And most of us realize that. I would say, this is the time for the district to pause and assess what value we got out of all of that. Pause and evaluate it. Look, we're all for diversity, we're all for inclusion, we're all for justice. Who wasn't for any of those things? Where I get a little squishy is the word equity. Instead of equality of opportunity, is what Martin Luther King used to say. Equity means to me in education, potentially lowering the bar on standards to make everybody equal. That's not the way to go. So with all that said, I think that, that the school, the whole district should slow down and reassess, even if you have to bring a consultant for, you know, a quarter of the price that we were spending on this director. Now's the time for the community to look at this and reassess. Thank you.
Is there anybody else for a public comment? Okay, we're gonna continue on with the agenda. The timer's open if there is, do you have some public comment?
Were you asking if someone else has public comment?
Yes.
I did, but I'm gonna give up my time for Pat if he wants to get back up.
Hi, Bonnie O'Keefe.
Can I just mention something? I'm sorry, just for one moment. So our school board policy does not allow us to be able to transfer time over, but thank you very much for that. And it's a BEDH if you're interested. Sorry.
It's okay. Bonnie O'Keefe, and this is a lovely school. I was on the building committee many years ago when we built this school. For two years, we, we debated where, when, how, how much, all that. My kids, well, one of them went to this school, the other two went to the old school. In those days, the teachers came to the parents if there was an issue with the child. With this system here, it seems to me that you are cutting the parents out completely. In fact, there are some school systems that use this that don't even tell the parents what's going on. And tell the children not to tell the parents what's going on. To me, that is not right. The family is the most important part of this country. It always has been, always will be. This is divisive. It is not healthy for the children or the family or the parents. So I have one question. Didn't we at the meeting vote not to have the MTSS person hired for this year and wait? Does it, can you answer that?
So it's the policy of the board that this is public comment. There is not a guarantee of an immediate answer, but what happens is next meeting, we can prepare a response.
Okay, well, I was under the impression that the town voted not to hire an MTSS. And now the school board is hiring an MTSS. To me, it seems like you're going against the wishes of the town. So that's my comment. Parents should know what's going on in the school. In my day, I was here in the school volunteering or being an aide through all my kids' years here in the school. I knew what was going on and I was invited to be here. I want, people wanted me to be here, teachers wanted me to be here. I don't know that that's still the same these days because schools don't want parents to know what's going on in them. And it's very, very scary. So I would say, let the teachers be the MTSS people. Let them relate directly to the parents, directly to the children. Not through 77 questions given monthly to the child. And if the parent could sit there with the child and answer the questions, possibly, but I know that won't happen. So that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Oh, am I okay to?
Yeah, please your name and address.
My name's Cameron Noir, I live on 6 Shannon Drive. So I just want to point out, as somebody who has three children in the school, that the parents are very encouraged to be involved. And while the MTSS thing has not started, I have children that are involved in special education. And we are given lots of forms and feedback, and the number one thing from the teachers is, do you have any feedback for what can help me to educate your child? So I don't, I think there's like a nationalized thing of, hey, this is what the school wants and this is what teachers are not telling children, but my experience at this school has not been that at all.
Thank you.
Is there a certain time limit I have here?
It's about three minutes.
Three minutes. Glenn Wass, 6 Gifford Farm Road, so I got some points here just to get through it quickly. The answer to the other question is, I do know the answer, is the money, there was money voted on not to get approved, but then it's up to them to decide how they handle that cut, so that was the answer to that. They decided to make cuts elsewhere. But my points are, in regards to going forward with the school renovation, I support a two-tiered process. I think we should separate, take care of the critical repairs first, and then deal with renovations separately and secondary so that hopefully we can get a smaller package there that benefits all the taxpayers. My second point is, just a reminder, I'm not saying anybody's guilty of this, but unlike the school administration, I have no problem, their first responsibility is get as much, build as much, do as much for the kids as possible. Let's build a Taj Mahal or whatever. The role of the school board, which a lot of you have kids or will have kids or whatever, you've got two priorities. Yeah, you're thinking of your own kids, but you can't forget the fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers here. And I think that's getting lost at times, to me, my opinion. So please think of the taxpayers. Another thing is I've watched a lot of these meetings on tape as opposed to come to them or whatever. I tend to sense that what we want to build here, I'm getting the sense, is to be number one in the state to cater to special needs, special assessments, things like that. Which is nice that we don't have to farm any of our kids out to other towns or other districts or whatever to get their care, that's great. However, there's a balance there. If we strive to become number one and build the best, just like the field of dreams, if you build it, they will come. Our percentage of special needs and special catering will keep increasing in this community. And people will move here temporarily to take advantage of that, to take advantage, and then they will move to a lower-cost area after they're done using those things. And so without any grants or help from the state to balance this, I think we should be fearful of trying to become number one and build the Taj Mahal as I'll refer to it, that's gonna draw this, what could be a minority population to become a majority population of the school. And it's gonna be unsustainable. The other thing that I have an issue with here in this town is we hardly have, if you look at the town of Manchester, our elderly exemption for those 65 and above and low income is half of what even the city of Manchester has. It's horrible, I'm gonna work with a selectman or whoever to try to get that improved or whatever, that we need more of an exemption. We have people in this town that are being forced to sell their farms, their land, their homes, when they just want to live here, they want to be generational or they wanna, they've built something here, they want to live and die here. It frustrates me when we come to some of these public meetings and people get up here and they say, look at your house values, look at your property values, you should be happy what the schools are bringing in here, and you're so, that's only good for somebody that's willing to sell. It's no good for the low-income people here that want to share in this, and we're becoming a community of the upper-middle class. We have to be a community for everybody here of the lower class too. And those people are getting priced out of this town, our elderly are getting priced out of this town. And I hope this town, all these people that say that, you know, they also support an increase in exemptions for this population, but there's no exemptions for people below the age of 65. We need low-income exemptions, we need elderly exemptions, because I'm fearful that the prices of the schools are going up so high, we're forcing low-income, even low-middle-income people out of this town. And that, that can't happen. And that's, that's my last point. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Scammon. I want to vote yes on a bond issue, because there are some repairs that need to be done to the school. And it's very important that they be done. Is this better? They're not listening anyways. I want to vote yes on a bond issue, but here's the deal, there are some, there are some repairs that need to be done to this school. And, and it's important that they do as soon as possible. But for me to vote yes on a bond issue, it's gotta be something that I support 100%. And what I'm hearing is that they want to possibly go whole hog and have an addition onto the school which will take care of this MTSSB part of their agenda. Now, I'm not convinced that I can support that. And if that's the case, then I'm gonna have to vote no on a bond issue. Now, I've seen this in the past, and sometimes it takes three years of floating a bond issue before the voters say yes. For instance, how many years did it take North Hampton to get a public library? Quite a few. And, but if, if we divide the bond issue into two sections, the immediate repairs, I bet that'll pass in March. And postpone a year or two on the MTSSB addition. And then we can, we can sell that to the people. Now, if they're trying to give us a poison pill, in other words, you want your repairs, so you're gonna have to accept this unacceptable agenda, that, that's not gonna fly because most of us are gonna say, okay, the repairs will wait. The building is, is not gonna fall down. And that's really what I came to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Phil Caparsoli, I live on 40 River Road. I want to talk about two issues. One, the constituents we serve, and two, the issue of special ed. I have to say, my first kid, my, my son has had an IEP, had for 18 years. In fact, it was written in this building. And I'm proud to say that as, as of today, he got, he got into Rochester Institute of Technology. A great, it's a great testimony to the IEP system that we already have. And that's my point, we have a system that works. It's individualized, it is intensive with the parent. And it took my son, who I'm proud to say who was, who was in bad shape, and got him into RIT on, on a scholarship. So there is no need to spend additional money and revenue on something we don't need. The other issue is, who's the constituents? Now, I live on River Road, and River Road is an interesting place. It's very wealthy homes, people on fixed incomes. And I moved there 20 years ago, 22 years ago now. And then what I've noticed is the fixed income people are moving away. They can't afford this town. And I moved to this town because it was a special place. It was a third working class, it was a third farm, and it was a third middle class. And that's changing, and it's not changing for the better, because they're getting squeezed out of town. In a perfect world, yeah, sure, it would be great to afford, afford all the repairs that we need, but we don't. In a perfect world, Stevie Ray Vaughan would still be, still be alive, so that's a joke, I guess it didn't work. My point, my point is, if we don't need it, why are we pricing people out of town? And we don't need it because the system does work, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
It's me again, sorry. Jan Teed, 2 Country Farm Road. I'm here really just to say, I think you guys have a tough job and I appreciate everything you all do. My husband and I were on the board of a condo association, so we get the whole pressures of reserves and what are we gonna spend money on? But I think I agree with so much of what's being said here. We need more transparency of what's going on, and I know we're trying to do that with, you know, Facebook and all of that, but I mean, true transparency of what our plan is, that's what we used to have to do. One, three, five years, what that looks like from an MTSS, where we're going with that, where we're going with money. Can we do critical repairs? Yes, let's talk about that, but let's not, we, $46 million on top of maybe a middle school thing we don't know about, a high school, a town thing? It's not just what we're talking about here, folks, it's everything else that's gonna keep hitting us in the face. So I think we have to be really careful of this. And so I, like I said, I know you have a tough job, but I would say critical repairs only, minimal expense. We still want to take good care of our kids, whoever that gentleman was who came up and talked about it. But we're not trying to shortcut anyone, we just have to be so careful. Everything is going up, food, everything, we're all being squeezed. We can't let this take us down. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mary Adie from 16 Kirkwall Drive in Stratum. And I'm here, essentially, the, the point of the meeting, I know, is to discuss the, the school renovation project and possible expansion. So, and I totally appreciate the comments from some of the speakers prior to my getting up here about, people love this town. I mean, we moved here specifically because we wanted to retire in a community that we had known a little bit about. And the longer we've been here, the more we appreciate all that Stratum has to offer. So I think the tax issue is something that, that concerns me and I think many other voters. While we want the best for our students, and, and I will also echo the comment that I think the administration and the board are doing a great, it's, it's not an easy job running a building like this. My husband's run a 2,000-room hotel. I know what it's like to have to do building maintenance and repairs and accrue for different things. So the first thing is, yes, I think we should go ahead and move to, to seriously do some very needed repairs in a building of this age. I think that makes common sense, it's good, we want our kids to be safe. But I think I would vote for the two-step process where we consider any possible renovations or, I'm sorry, expansion very carefully before we go down that road and, and start, you know, going with bond issues and looking at the, the cost of what it would really be to us as taxpayers to add more classroom space, whatever. Hopefully, you can work within the, the framework of this wonderful building that you have to make space for what you need for proper education of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Sheehan, I live on Tall Pines. We put both our daughters through this school, and now I've got three grandchildren in this school. In regards to the renovations or building of a new school, I'm just, it's such a beautiful facility now, and I, of course, I don't, I haven't used it since the kids were in school here, but I'm totally in favor of the necessary monies to like put air conditioning in and update it as much as possible. The whole $46 million, I feel, could turn into a big dig in Boston. And $46 million is gonna turn into 50, turn into 60 possibly, times as they are with the economy and so forth. I think the board has to be more sensitive to the taxpayers, whether we have kids in the school or not, as part of the Stratum community. And so my, my point would be that the board look at making the incremental changes and building improvements needed to maintain the school. And then also, I firmly believe in performance. Not too many years ago, Stratum was in the top five. Now it's 83rd. In the last meeting I was to, the, the principal said, well, that's in the top 25%. Well, that's not good enough for Stratum, especially with the amount of money we spend in the, the performance, performances and so forth. So I would say, if you, if the teachers get the performance better, so get a better ranking for Stratum, then the, then other things will come, maybe more money for building renovations and so forth. Thank you.
Mark Sullivan, Gifford Farm Road, just also supporting the two-stage process. Gives us a chance to get the repairs done. And then, secondly, we can watch what happens with the continued decline in enrollment. And we can look at the need, need for, and then we can look at the, the need for an expansion later on with the enrollment decreasing. Would support the repairs that are needed, but not necessarily the enlargement. Thank you.
Kim Nolton, Bunker Hill, and I concur with the previous speakers, I think it's time to be fiscally responsible and work with the two-step process. Thank you.
Nancy Kindler, 1 Benjamin Road. I want to applaud everybody that spoke before me. I pretty much agree with most of what is being said. And I also agree with, agree with the two-step process. So many people in this town are having hard times. There were so many people don't, that don't want other people to know what tough times they are having. And I see it every day, and I see it all around me, and I'm sure you do too. And taxes is a very detrimental thing to the lives of many people. Some are going without medication, food, so that they can pay taxes and continue. I think we have to keep in mind what the elderly go through. I'll be 76 in July, and thanks to my husband, we're doing all right. We're not rich, but we're, we're doing okay. But I know people that I actually could stand here and cry about how bad some people are doing, not just here, but all through the state and the country. And we all know it's a tough time. So I agree that you guys work hard, you have a tough job, and you have to do some repairs. We're all for that. But let's take it one step at a time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, so at this point, we are gonna move into, the next on our agenda was PFOAs, which I know some of you are here for. We have some people coming in to talk to us at, they should be here maybe around 7:15. So what we're gonna do now is we are going to move up to our open board seat. We have four candidates who are interested in a fifth vacancy of our fifth position. So we have some questions for those candidates. And then we will take a vote and that person will be seated tonight. Go ahead. And then the building committee will be following the PFOA update. That'd be great. I think while we're excusing the candidates, I was also just thinking we would go through and introduce ourselves because maybe some of you don't necessarily know who we are or sort of why we're doing these positions. So if the board members would just introduce themselves and say maybe if they have kids in the school or sort of just a 20-second thing about why they're doing this board position, that'd be great.
Sure. Hey, everyone, my name is Sophie Saltinstall. Can you hear me in the back? I'll use my soccer voice.
Excuse us.
Yes. You can't hear, okay, okay, folks are talking. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, Sophie Saltinstall, I grew up in Stratum, I went to SMS. I was actually born the year that this building was erected, so it's very personal to me and I'm very pleased to be on the board. I have a three-year-old girl, a one-and-a-half-year-old son, and another baby coming in seven weeks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jennifer Scrafford, Board Chair, this is my second term. I have a third grader, sixth grader, eighth grader, all of which came through SMS. And, you know, I do volunteer in the school quite frequently. I've been to a lot of different events, classroom. I've always have felt very welcome and, you know, I, I hear all of you talking about taxes. I pay taxes. My kids are not gonna benefit from any renovation, but I think it's still something that's important. And so that's why I ran for another term to see how we can prepare SMS for the future.
Eric Herring, Vice Chair, and this is my second term. My first term was a short one. I filled in for somebody who's, who basically took over a position. So it'll be very similar to what we have tonight, where somebody's gonna be appointed to the position. My real concern at that time was around those missing years that we, I felt that we had because of the pandemic. And we have, I, my children were personally affected. I have a 13-year-old who is now on to Sacred Heart. And then I still have one student here, nine-years-old, who is, I see some of the teachers here who've taught that lovely ch- child, who is still in school here at SMS. And those, both of those kids were really affected by COVID. I mean, it really put everybody back a little bit academically. I think whenever you folks look at some of the rankings, and you look at some of the scores, and some of the state assessments that we saw over that time period, it was definitely directly related to some of the activities and the choices that were made during that time period. So my real concern was very much academics first, and I really wanted to see our kids succeed academically.
Yeah, of course.
And I, beyond wanting to see them succeed academically, I want to see them be well-prepared for middle school. That's really our job, is getting them onto the next step. So that's my focus, and that's why I'm here. Paul?
My name is Paul Tassini. My wife Kathy and I retired here to Stratum three years ago. So if you look at the board, I guess I'm the unique one. Why did I run? Because my two sons, who are now pushing 40, went through the public school system back in the town where they were raised. And Kathy and I did not volunteer. We didn't do anything with the school or with the town. And so when this opportunity came up, I asked my wife, I said, you know, I've got more time now. It would be good to give back to a town. So while it's not the town that my sons, in which my towns went to, my kids went to school, this is certainly a great town. So I decided to run, and here I am.
Yeah, thank you. I'd love to have administrators just introduce yourself as well, if you wouldn't mind.
Hi, I'm Molly O'Keefe, the Director of Finance. I live in SAU-16, not in Stratum, but in Kensington. I grew up in Kensington, so I went to that elementary school, but I did go to the, at the time, the junior high school here in Exeter, and Exeter High School. So a proud graduate of Exeter to come back and be the Director of Finance.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Andruski. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Schools for SAU-16. I'm also the designee for Stratum, so I get the privilege to work with the Stratum School Board and the administration. I too am a parent of a student in SAU-16. We live in Newfield, so I have a son who's in third grade at Newfield's Elementary School, and I also have a 20-year-old at Keene State College, so I've got the bookends. So thank you for coming tonight, and I appreciate your time.
I, hello, everybody. I am Kate Lucas. I'm the building principal. I have two children, neither of whom went to school in Stratum, because we live in York, Maine, but I take deep pride in the work that we do here and the experience that the kids of Stratum here, have here, and the expertise of the teaching staff. So while I don't live here, I feel deeply connected to this community and the residents of Stratum.
That was great. I'm Kate Blinder. I'm the Assistant Principal here. I'm in my seventh year serving in this role. I also own children, but I live in Northampton next door, so I'm your neighbor. I serve on the school board there as well. My husband's in education. It's kind of all we do, and I'm proud to represent SMS all the time.
Thank you. I didn't know that about the school. So yeah, thank you. I just wanted to just make sure everybody knows, you know, we're volunteers, we love this town, just to have that known by everybody, and as you all do too. So today, what we're going to do, we have four candidates who have stepped forward bravely to fill the spot left by Ken Otto, who we will dearly miss. So we have a, we have set questions we're all going to ask, and then they will confer. So I have the pleasure of starting today, so I would love to ask you to please introduce yourself and tell us, just like we did, what motivated you to seek a position on the board.
Okay. My name is Kathleen Peck. I actually wrote, went as a write-in at the last minute. I live on 13 Bittersweet Lane, and I have-
I wonder if you want to just pull that closer?
Sure. Perfect. I have two children in the school. I have a fourth grader, and I have a second grader, and they have been in school here since kindergarten. Actually, my youngest has been here since preschool. And I am a volunteer within the school. I'm a class parent. I volunteer in the rec department as well with the children in the school. And as a parent, when I found out that there was a vacancy coming up on the board, I decided I would like to run to be even more involved.
Thank you. All right, Paul?
Can you please describe your experience and understanding of school board policies and developing a school budget?
So my understanding of developing school board policies is pretty minimal, because I've never been on a school board before. But what I am understanding is, I looked up the responsibilities of the school board, and they have to do with things concerning school personnel. They have to do with creating policies regarding sexual harassment. And so my understanding is that the school board would reevaluate those policies yearly and create policies for the school in that way.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, Kathleen. Can you tell us about a time where you've worked with a team and how you supported that team to be successful?
Oh, my goodness. This is, this is interesting. I've worked on many teams throughout my career. I started out as a military nurse, and so I was a military officer. And so I graduated from undergrad as a young 22-year-old, and instantly I reported for active duty. And within six months, I was in charge of a unit at Walter Reed during, you know, the height of the war. Now, people in the military are incredibly different, and they come from different backgrounds, and they come from different education backgrounds. And so I was in charge of making sure that that shift would run smoothly every single time I was working, and I worked a lot. Now, that has now translated, I am now a nurse and estheticist at Portsmouth Hospital. So I administer anesthesia at Portsmouth, and I am in charge of the patient. So if something goes wrong, I have to direct operating room nurses, I have to inform surgeons what's going on, I have to confer with other anesthesiologists, I have to confer with cardiologists. So day-to-day, I am working as a team member and as a leader, and so I feel very comfortable in that role. This is quite different than being on a school board. Education is not my background, but I think that I can take those things, such as compromise, deducing what's going on, collecting information, and creating a plan that's going to help the school function well, to be quite honest.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
How will you ensure that the needs of all students, including those from diverse backgrounds, are considered and addressed by the board?
So I think I have been blessed, I mean, I grew up in New Hampshire, and then I have been blessed to live around the country and experience the diversity of this wonderful country, and like I said before, the diversity of the military. And so I have been trained in diversity training and inclusion training, and I was the medical officer for my unit in the reserves. And all of those things have helped me figure out how to include other people that are not like me. The thing is, we, sometimes people on either side of the spectrum kind of get lost in the mix, right? The kids that need extra help and the kids that don't need any extra help. And so I think what the school is trying to do is to make sure that those children on either side of the spectrum don't get mixed, and that we help lead them through elementary school in the best way possible. And I think the school board is trying to help them do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Eric?
What do you see as the most pressing educational priorities for SMS, and how do you plan to address them?
So I had children in the school when COVID happened, so we were sent home, and it was a very sad end of the school year. And so I was very lucky that we were able to get through COVID with minimal disruptions. Unfortunately, I know that many children did not have that same luxury. And so I know the most pressing issues that our teachers are facing today is getting those children who are still having education, or emotional, or social issues from COVID, back to where they should be. And so I think that's the most pressing problem, is supporting our teachers as they try to do that.
Thank you. Kathleen, do you have any questions for us?
I will have so many questions if I get elected to the board, but I'm a fast learner, and I'm willing to learn and be a valuable team member. Team member, so at this time, no.
Okay. Thank you so much. This is not easy. Really appreciate it. Interviews with an audience. Oh. Not jealous.
I know. This is, this is, that is really tough. It's bad enough, it's bad enough to do it in private. What?
And it's a packed house tonight.
Very difficult.
Can you all hear in the back, or are you not able to hear? You can hear? Okay. If at any point anyone can't hear, if you could just do a little ear symbol, then we'll know to try and raise the volume.
We could provide a microphone.
We're going to get new mics and a speaker.
A microphone.
This is difficult.
Agreed.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to open it, pass it to a discussion.
Okay. We can talk.
If we could find a microphone, that would create equity for everybody to hear, and everyone would appreciate that if we wanted equity.
We don't want that.
I think we're confused about the word. I think there's confusion. Everybody wants to hear.
It's a microphone for people at home, but not for the people here.
Correct. We should get on a microphone.
Yeah, there should be a speaker that this thing, a loudspeaker that this comes through.
That's actually the only thing for tonight, so don't you worry about it. We're going to talk about it. That would allow everybody to hear.
You want it, you can have it. You want it, you want to talk about it?
No, I'm talking about, no, I want you to run with it. If you're so passionate, tap into that. Hi there.
Hello.
Thank you so much for being here tonight and for volunteering your time. We have a series of questions that we're going to ask. It'll be the same as we ask the other candidates, and then there's going to be time at the end for you to ask us questions.
Okay.
So could you just introduce yourself, and then tell us a little bit about yourself and what motivated you to seek this position on the board?
Sure. My name is Brandon Michaud. I live in Stratum. I have two children, one who's in first grade here now, and one who will be in kindergarten in two years or so. And so I've been, my son just got to kindergarten last year, and we've been involved in the school. We've lived in town now almost, over 10 years. We moved here for the school system. We knew how great it was, and so far, we've been pretty pleased with that. And I just feel like I'm an educator myself. I've been teaching for almost 20 years at a neighboring district high school. I know all the, some of the ins and outs of that, our school board meetings, policies, procedures, things like that. And I feel like it would be, seeing the opening, I didn't, I never thought about running, but seeing the opening and knowing that it was a vacancy, I thought that I could, you know, step into that potentially and, you know, start to give back to my community.
Sounds great. All right.
Can you please describe your experience and understanding of school board policies and developing a school budget?
So currently, right now, I'm a high school math teacher and a department head for the last four years. So I've been involved with my administrator, dealing with budgets from that aspect. So I know the process and the procedure. I know that you guys were operating similar to all other schools in that sort of a bottom-line budget, and trying to find funds and things like that. We've worked with supply issues, trying to figure out what we can afford, what we can't afford, what we need versus what we want, those kind of things. The whole start process that starts in October and works through the various budget committees, and then, you know, public hearings and things like that. So I'm very familiar with, with those inner workings, and from both the teacher's side and seeing it happen and watching things get approved from where I work.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, Brandon. Can you tell us about a time that you worked with a team and how you supported that team to be successful?
I mean, I feel like we do, my math department at Winnicott High School, just over the border there, we have 14 different teachers, so we're constantly working together. It's a very large department. So what we have to do always is, we're implementing new initiatives all the time, competency-based grading, attendance problems, all sorts of things. So one of the things that I like to try to do is, as a department head, is we, just communication. So I go around to different groups to try to get, make sure everyone's input is heard, to try to figure out where people stand on various issues, and then once our principal makes a decision, how to try to best implement that within that department. So I feel like we do that, you know, on the regular, every quarter, basically.
Sounds great. Thank you. Sophie?
Awesome. How will you ensure that the needs of all students, including those from diverse backgrounds, are considered and addressed by the board?
I think that's important to come from probably administration, to find out, you know, what, what our different populations are, and when new initiatives come up, to try to figure out how to make sure we're meeting those needs. For example, at our current high school, we're looking into different things for, our department administrator has spearheaded and allowed us to try to work with math for ESOL students and trying to, you know, change those different things. So we, whenever we make large-based curriculum decisions and things like that, we try to incorporate the needs of others, diverse groups, and we get that information from, I would think at the school board, you get that information from your department, your administrators, and that data.
Thank you. Eric?
What do you see as the most pressing educational priorities for SMS, and how do you plan to address them?
So the building seems to be a pressing issue.
Well played.
So, I mean, I think that when you look at a building project like that, I think that's the biggest issue, and I think that part of that is coming up with, I mean, I was here when the middle school building initiative went through, and how that went through a couple of different iterations before it was finally passed. I feel like that's probably something that may happen here, and hearing feedback from the town, figuring out what we need to do, and what we would like to do, and trying to how to figure out how to meet the needs of the students with those needs and those wants. We might need to, we may not need something for the building, but we may want it to help meet the different diverse groups and things like that, to be, you know, what part of the, the, everyone is welcome in Stratum, you know, school board goal, and we have to honor that, and that might mean you have to spend some money to do that. So I think it's education, making sure that what is proposed for that issue or other issues demonstrates the value that the taxpayers and the constituents would get.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't, actually.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you so much for coming tonight and being interested, and we would love you on the building group, and so thank you for your time tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Brandon?
Michaud.
Michaud. M-I-C-H-A-U-D. We have two more. Yeah.
I'm there.
Unless they ran away.
Stranger things have happened.
It must have been a wild, wild one.
There were several of them, actually. Hi there.
It was wild.
Thank you so much for coming tonight, volunteering your time, and having an interest in the board. It's awesome. We really appreciate it. We all have some questions that we're going to ask, and then there's going to be an opportunity at the end for you to ask us questions. These are the same questions we've asked all the candidates. Can you tell us your name, a little bit about yourself, and what motivated you to seek this position on the board?
Yeah, so my name is Tanya Scales. I live at 21 Rollins Farm. I have been in Stratum for about eight years now with my husband, and I have two small children, a three-year-old and a one-year-old daughter. And my husband and I moved-
this position on the board?
Yeah, so my name is Tanya Scales. I live at 21 Rollins Farm. I have been in Stratum for about eight years now with my husband, and I have two small children, a three-year-old and a one-year-old daughter. And my husband and I moved to Stratum from Illinois. We actually ended up in Hudson at first, and I found a job over in Portsmouth, and we came out this way and really fell in love with Stratum as a town. At the time, you know, the schools were very, very good and we were planning family, so we, we chose Stratum as our home, and we've been here ever since. And the reason why I have put my name in for school board and shown some interest is I think there's been a lot of, as you know, there's been a lot of town interest recently in the board and what's happening on the board with the building renovation, MTSS and a variety of other topics. I am not on social media, so I get all of my information from either the Select Board newsletter or other avenues like that. And so I saw the request for the vacancy come in, and I thought that I have a vested interest in my children's future place of schooling, and I, I see that there's a lot of, a lot of passionate people in this town, and I really think that it is the right time for me and an opportunity to have an impact on my children's future, future school and also other children of this town, and that is what's driven me to be here tonight.
That's great. Thank you so much. Paul has your second question.
Can you please describe your experience and understanding of school board policies and developing a school budget?
Sure. I have limited current knowledge of the school board policies. I have read, started to read over them, especially the ones about governance. I have been involved in my household budget, and at my place of employment, I do become involved in financial discussions there. So to go back, I am a software engineer. I'm a technical lead, so I have a charge of helping produce new features and within a larger app, and that leads me into a lot of financial discussions regarding budgeting of time and scope of projects, cost of goods sold and other parts of revenue that has to deal with that particular feature. So I have some knowledge there. And then I would say, in terms of the policies themselves for the school board, they're, from what I've read, they're, they're pretty straightforward. I don't feel like there would be a long gap in getting up to speed with all of the policies that are in place and understanding how to utilize them and adhere to them and what my role is on the board, so.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you, Tanya. Tell us about a time that you worked with a team and how you supported that team to be successful.
Yeah. I do this every day. So as a technical lead, I am in charge of a few engineers underneath me. Usually the teams are very small and autonomous. They can be anywhere from three to five people. I have a few peers that I work with in a triad, is what we call it. So it would be me, a project manager, and a designer, and we kind of all collaborate on like the higher level discussions about our, the product and disseminate that down to the engineers on the team. So recently, as an example, our piece of software released a very large feature that had a lot of cross-team collaboration going on. So we were in charge of one piece, and then a lot of that time it touches a lot of other groups within that, that product area. So my role in that feature release or product development is to have discussions with my triad, other teams' triads, and to do a lot of roadmapping and planning, adhering to deadlines, giving status updates, really kind of doing all that glue work. And then additionally, if I have extra time, I get into the code and kind of get into that nitty-gritty business. And so that would, I would say, this, this large feature that we collaborated on took quite a few teams, probably more than a dozen, and we successfully launched that on time recently. And so we're just one small kind of cog in that wheel, but definitely a lot of team collaboration going on there to reach a deadline, so.
Thank you. Sophie? How will you ensure that the needs of all students, including those from diverse backgrounds, are considered and addressed by the board?
That's a very good question. So I'll tell you my experience currently with diversity, inclusion, and at my workplace we do D-I-B, which is diversity, inclusion and belonging, similar to DEI. We have monthly meetings on various D-I-B, DEI topics. I have led some of those discussions. I think my, my general education level and awareness of it is high. I think there's more to learn, as there always is. So my, I would rely on a couple of things. I think I would rely on any previous information or data about the students' needs and also on some of the experience of the administration in this area. And then lastly, my own personal skill set. I am a certified professional of web accessibility, which is a, basically a title that allows me some, some knowledge about disabled people and how they view really the web and interact with it and are able to interact with it. So I have led initiatives at work to increase accessibility for our product, so I have some sense from that area as well. And so I think I would probably utilize all of that and look at some of the policies that are currently in place and see if there's anything that would need to be adjusted to really benefit the students in that area.
Thank you. All right. Eric has the last question.
What do you see as the most pressing educational priorities for SMS and how do you plan to address them?
Yeah, okay, so educational priorities. I think there is a clear, what I would call a gap in performance that a lot of folks seem to keep bringing up. So I think that that is probably one of the most pressing issues, whether it's from understanding the source of that, working to like bridge that gap and close it. Again, I'm a very like, I'm a very data-driven person, so I think that's gonna be my, my first avenue is go to any enrollment or any studies, any polling, anything that's been done previously that I can kind of grab onto initially to understand the problem. And again, I think lending, you know, learning and like hearing from the administration on, you know, maybe why those gaps are there, if they perceive the same gaps, things like that. I think there's a tendency to have, there's, there's a lot of miscommunication that can happen when, when there's not, I would, I would say like transparent data kind of being like out there for everybody. And so I think that, that is where I would focus initially. It's my understanding there's, you know, one meeting after this for the board, and then there's a small break of a few months, and I think that's like a perfect ramp-up period to kind of understand exactly where some of those educational gaps are coming from. If there, if we're talking about any other gaps, obviously there's, there's conversations around the building renovation and the fiscal responsibility of the board there. So I think that's another area to focus on if I were to become a board member outside of educational and student needs.
Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for us?
I do not at this time.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you for your time. This is a tough, tough setting, but you did awesome, and we'll bring in the last person now.
Thank you.
Sure. It is. Tanya Scales. Yep. S-C-A-L-E-S.
Are we going to non-public?
To the.
Isn't there, isn't there another person?
Yes, yes, after. We're just trying to figure out.
Can you tell?
We don't want to dismiss this large group.
Eric, can you tell Paul we'll go into not in public?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right after this or at the end? Just the point of clarity.
After this.
Thank you.
Do you want to explain maybe while we're waiting, just so folks know and that it'll just be hopefully brief or something?
Yeah. So after we hear the fourth candidate, we will go into non-public quickly and discuss, and then come out, and that person will be seated for this meeting, and, and they'll get right into the fire pretty quickly. And then they'll, you know, abstain from things that they haven't participated in. So I just wanted to let you know, please stick around. We have a couple of great presentations coming up, and we'll just keep the non-public session brief.
Could I have one more thing to that before we start?
Please.
We're, we're gonna move, so a lot of times we ask in non-public, you guys have to go, so you guys stay. We'll be brief. We're gonna just go quickly to another room, so you don't have to move. You can, you can stay right here in this room.
Okay.
Hello?
And so, hi, we have our final candidate. Thank you so much for your time and coming in tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
We all have some questions for you, and then there'll be an opportunity at the end for you to ask us questions if there's anything that comes to mind.
Okay.
So just to start, we'd love you to introduce yourself and tell us what motivated you to seek a position on the board?
My name is Cameron Orr. I have three children that attend the school, so I've been pretty involved with them for the last six years. One of them's moving on to middle school this year, and then I have two others, and I've been, you know, involved with the special educators here, and I think, you know, the job that they do at the school, they're, you know, always involved with me as a parent, and, you know, I thought I should get more involved with the school and try to support our, you know, educators here.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Paul has your second question.
Can you please describe your experience and understanding of school board policies and developing a school budget?
So it's my understanding that the school board works with the town to pass the school budget, but that the school board doesn't dictate the spending of the budget as far as, it was just my understanding that they work with the financial advisory committee to submit that to the board for consideration, but that the administration usually proposes what they're going to request. That's my understanding, which is probably not complete, but that's what I know.
Thanks.
Yeah, the board acts as oversight. Eric, you have the next question.
Thank you, Cameron. Can you please describe your experience and understanding of a school, I'm sorry, that's not the right question. It's doing so good. All right. Can you tell us about a time you worked with a team and how you supported that team to be successful?
Time that I worked with a team? So in my professional career, I work at the nuclear plant in Seabrook, and I'm a project manager as well as a network engineer there. So a lot of times we have cross-disciplined teams as far as stakeholders that are involved with not only like the plant and the personnel there, but I work closely with the state of New Hampshire Department of Emergency Management and the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. So something we had to do to get a really disparate team together was there was multiple facilities throughout the seacoast that required emergency notification across not only our company, but the state of New Hampshire. So it was an involvement with our team at the plant, but also, like I said, the Department of Emergency Management and MEMA and, you know, the state police and as well as like AT&amp;T and the, like a bunch of different providers. So it was like a pretty intense project, working across different stakeholders, but we regularly work with multiple stakeholders with the state because of the role that, you know, the plant plays, plays with safety. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. Sophie? How will you ensure that, sorry, that the needs of all students, including those from diverse backgrounds, are considered and addressed by the board?
So as, as a parent of children that have special education needs, I'm pretty aware of the different levels of education and kind of severity depending on from student to student. So I think it's important to support, you know, initiatives that are data-driven so that you can identify where, you know, students from different backgrounds may have different challenges than, you know, other students. And it's not to say that, you know, one student is better than others, smarter than the other, but I think it's important to be data-driven on that, and I think that points you towards, you know, where the supports need to be regardless of, not regardless, but considering the background as well.
Thank you. Eric has the final question.
What do you see as the most pressing educational priorities for SMS and how do you plan to address them?
Most pressing educational priorities?
Yes.
I do think that the data-driven is, is kind of like the most important thing because, again, having been involved with the IEP and the 504 plans, one of my questions at the MTSS session was how that data is, you know, different for the MTSS versus like an IEP or a 504. So I think, you know, it's easier to go to the stakeholders, which are the town taxpayers and the parents, and to say, hey, we have this data, so, you know, we've shown over time that this indicator means we should have this intervention. And I think that can also show that there's cost savings associated with that. So I think a lot of people are, you know, there's the taxpayers, and I think showing the data that you can have early interventions to prevent something from turning into a bigger problem is a really important key. So I'm, you know, my plan would be to support data-driven approach.
Thank you so much. This is a challenge, challenging situation, and we appreciate your time and, and your thoughtful answers. Do you have any questions for us?
So the only question I had was how the school board for the individual schools relates to the Exeter Regional District. I thought I had read that some of the members are part of that, or I'm just trying to understand how that works.
Yeah. So all the districts within SAU 16, all of the chairs or all of the board members also serve on the joint board.
Okay.
Which meets, I don't know, six times a month, and, and we go over the administrative budget and do oversight on that. Is that answering your question?
Yeah, so there's not.
And then there's also, yeah, please.
All right. So each of the elementary schools is its own district because Stratum pays the Stratum tax rate, Kensington pays the Kensington tax rate and so on. So every elementary school is its own district. And then there's also the district which is the cooperative, and it's the cooperative middle school and high school, which also includes SST and adult education. And so on your Stratum tax card, there's two parts of your education tax rate. There's the cooperative tax rate and your elementary tax rate. And so that's how you pay for the cooperative part, is you, Stratum pays the Stratum portion of the assessment towards the cooperative. So there are two different districts. This district only has oversight over the elementary school, but they all come together to form the joint board, which is all of the elementaries plus the cooperative school boards together, and then the joint board oversees the office of the superintendent.
So the local board does vote on the regional one?
So you, you as a taxpayer vote on it. So when you go to the ballot, so we, in Stratum are what they call an annual town meeting, where you go into the gym and you duke it out till you come out with a budget. But as the cooperative, there was called an SB2, and that is where you have a ballot vote. So you as a resident of Stratum would go to the ballot to vote for the cooperative.
So what is the school board's role? Is it just advisory as far as the joint school board?
So that's gonna be a great question for Dr. Andruski.
Like walking right into it. Can you repeat the question, Cameron?
Sorry. So we were talking about the role of the joint school board and how it relates to the local one.
Sure.
And, and it's Molly, right? Okay, sorry. I was saying that, you know, the vote is through the SB2 process, but so what's the joint school board's role?
Sure. So the joint school board, their, their first and foremost is to evaluate the superintendent. So everybody on the joint school board, that's the one employee that they supervise.
Okay.
So the 33 members have gone through over the course of the year, getting feedback from administrators, both at the central office and building-level administrators, and then working through the goals that the superintendent set. So that's their first and foremost. Second is to pass the SAU budget. So we present a budget to the SAU because it's not associated with towns, but it does have impacts because that's the assessment fee that goes into the local budget, but it's to support the services from the business administrator, special education, superintendent services, because by law you have to provide superintendent and financial services. So that is the part of what they approve there. And then this year, we started to work on joint board policies. So that had been something that we hadn't have till this year of what we would govern our 33 members when we're working through policies that, that would be best practices for them as a board, but also.
So we were talking about the role of the joint school board and how it relates to the local one.
Sure.
And it's Molly, right? Okay, sorry. I was saying that the vote is through the SB2 process. But so what's the joint school board's role?
Sure. So the joint school board, their first and foremost is to evaluate the superintendent. So everybody on the joint school board, that's the one employee that they supervise.
Okay.
So the 33 members have gone through over the course of the year, getting feedback from administrators, both at the central office and building-level administrators, and then working through the goals that the superintendent set. So that's their first and foremost. Second is to pass the SAU budget. So we present a budget to the SAU because it's not associated with the towns, but it does have impacts because that's the assessment fee that goes into the local budget. But it's to support the services from the business administrator, special education, superintendent services, because by law you have to provide superintendent and financial services. So that is the part of what they approve there. And then this year, we started to work on joint board policies. So that had been something that we hadn't have till this year of what we would govern our 33 members when we're working through policies that would be best practices for them as a board, but also for us as an SAU. So those are the three big things that we look at. And then we meet about quarterly for the joint board and that's where you get a chance to talk with the central office administration on things that are happening throughout all of our schools through SAU. Because sometimes you get to only see the Stratum lens, but often things that are happening in Stratum are also happening in East Kingston or at Exeter. And here's your opportunity to hear that.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
This might not have been the question you were asking, Cameron, but that means that you've got responsibilities to be at this board meeting, the joint board meeting,
Right.
which happens once or twice, you know, once every other month. And then there are committees as well. So there are committees that-
Well, that's what I, I know there was a discussion before about the policies and that sort of, so I was curious if the joint board was involved with setting policy and that sort of thing.
The policy committee is the most involved because there's one member from each board that they look through and they give feedback on all the policies. This year, over 100 policies were passed that we had to look at to review. Some were miniscule that we did not have to review, but oftentimes we'll bring about seven policies that come from that policy committee for suggestions to update in our local boards.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you so much. So we're going to meet if you would just step outside and-
Okay. Yes, I'll bring them there. We can go to non-public.
You know what I'm going under. All right. Do I have a motion to go into non-public under chapter 91A 32C?
So moved.
I'll second.
I think roll call?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll go into non-public briefly. Do you want to use that room?
Many years and at different points, we have been on the same team collaborating together. I think as our roles have evolved, we've still been able to support that collaborative model. A large part of that was through a UNH program called Learning Through Teaching. We've been a part. There's 10 of us staffers who are currently engaged in this professional development. And through that work, we were challenged to kind of really look at our practice and always see how we can improve. So about two years ago, we started co-teaching in the area of writing. So we would kind of come together with 60 kids, all of our classes combined, and then really immerse them in an inquiry-based model of teaching where they're doing self-discovery in writing and then we're meeting them to support them. Through all this work, we then challenged ourselves to submit a proposal to NCTE, which is the National Council for Teachers of English, as a way to present nationally and we were accepted. So this past November, we actually presented nationally this presentation. So today, we're just going to give you a really brief overview of our work and what we presented. Sure. So one of the first things that we presented on when we went to Ohio was why this work has been impactful for us and for our students. And one of those reasons is because we collaborate and find joy in each other and in our students. And we know that in education, one of the ways that teachers can continue to feel supported and to support their students is by connecting with each other. And so we proposed a model for doing this that doesn't involve a ton of time away from students because you're growing and learning and observing your colleagues and watching their instructional moves and learning from each other's students together as you're responding to your students and collecting observational data and of course, more hard data through their writing samples. So we talked about ways that we are able to come together, even now that we're not on the same team, to collaborate and find joy with each other and with our kiddos. So when I came to SMS, I was, I had done Learning Through Teaching at both of my, one of my previous schools. So I had been in both. And this was when I came to SMS with a kindergarten team. We really just shifted. This is simply a shift to asking kids to write through bookmaking. The microphone. I'm usually really drawn to this thing, so. What is bookmaking? So the process that I learned through this awesome text, A Teacher's Guide to Getting Started with Beginning Writers, I moved from third grade to kindergarten. So I came in kind of like going from essay writing to I don't know how kindergartners write when they start school. This book and my team, when I got here, really leaned into the routine of bookmaking, which was through giving kids access to blank pages, supporting them with the phonics piece, supporting them really creatively and working from an asset-based approach where we're noticing what the kids are doing and building them up from there as opposed to a deficit-based model. So these are some first graders writing right now. And these are some of the things that it provided for our students, the bookmaking piece. And the inquiry piece was agency over how they write and what they write and where they write and text placement, illustration choices. It gave them voice. It gives them voice, I should say. Where they really shine. You can sit with 20 books and see 20 different writers. It's so beautiful. And volumes as teachers, where we always want kids to write and write and write and write and write. And bookmaking is super, super motivating. And they just wrote volumes totally on their own. It was so cool. It is so cool. And here's the inquiry piece. Do you want to talk about it?
Sure.
Okay. It's me again. So I guess historically, we've used an inquiry-based approach in more content-specific areas like social studies and science. So we have spent the last few years sort of honing that craft with our students in writing. And that experience allows them to take ownership over their pieces. It allows them to develop their own criteria that they use to evaluate, to set goals, to help us best meet those goals and coach them in the right ways. And it also allows them to understand sort of where their writing is at now and where they're going next. So we start every inquiry with what do you think you already know about this topic? So Isabel and I co-taught a narrative writing unit at the beginning of this year with my third graders and her first graders around that piece, beginning with what do you already know about narrative text? From there, we immerse them in a lot of different texts relating to that genre in this example. But they're noticing and wondering the moves that the authors make. They're noticing criteria specific to that genre of text. And we're collecting all those notices and wonders. Also, we sometimes say like, oh, they're not noticing that perhaps every narrative has some kind of ending to it. When students are making books day off and like write and write and write, we're like, we need some closure, some conclusion. We need to feel some finality here as your reader. So one of the things that we did was think with our students about what do authors do to engage their writers, but also give them a sense of closure at the end of a text. So we're collecting all of these things across time. And then together with students, after all of these investigations and these opportunities to experience, experiment with different techniques and moves as writers, we then ask them to sort all of these notices and wonders into categories. So do all texts of this genre or form have these components? Do most have these components? Do just some have these components? And from there, we build a rubric with them. And we say, okay, if all narrative texts have these components, should your narrative text have these components? Yes, okay. So that becomes part of their must-have in their narrative. And they know the criteria so well. This showed up on SAS testing this year because when we were doing the writing SAS testing, our students had different genres. And they were like, oh, wait, yes, persuasive writing. I know that it has to have these components or narrative writing has to have these components or informational writing has to have these components because they developed them for themselves. From that point, they evaluate their own writing using that rubric and they sign up for groups with us or we gently nudge them toward a group when we notice that they might need some support or something. So we're able to really tailor their instruction that way. They receive feedback from other adults. For example, Mrs. Healy pushes into my room to help coach students in her role. They give feedback based on those things and make revisions and edits from that point. And in the end, they take their work public in some way and have some celebration at the end of the unit. And Jennifer's daughter is in my class and her writing pieces were some that we took with us to Ohio to showcase this work and to see our students writing publicly. So these are just some of the moves, the instructional moves that we make as educators throughout this process, really no matter the content area, to help personalize instruction and making sure that we're giving students what they need and also allowing them to take ownership and to understand their own goals in whatever area we're doing this in. We did share videos because you learned fast. We can include this presentation for anyone. But I think just also highlighting this great work we're doing. Opportunity to share not only nationally, but we also presented this course, a three-credit graduate course at UNH last summer. We're coming back this summer with reading through inquiry. So if you are interested and want to join us, we'll be there.
May we play this video?
Yeah, I would love it.
Quick.
Yes, please.
And this is a good snapshot of what the classroom looks like. You'll hear kids talking over the video about our writing process and what it means to them. I'm also going to say, next Thursday night is our showcase. And if you are interested in seeing some of the beautiful work that the kids do at the school, talking to teachers, getting curious and asking questions, please come.
Do you love about writing?
It's like my favorite part of the day because it's the only time where I get like, well, I can do it at free choice, but like I can do anything else then. So at writing time, I like to let my imaginations build and it's really fun.
Make very detailed pictures.
That's my favorite part of the day is writing.
Writing?
Because you can put your ideas from your head to a book on paper and other people can find out what you're thinking.
We work on both sides of the world and we work on the first strategy. So we work together.
We noted like a few things I like. About like keys and speech bubbles and panels. And he's really funny.
I write and I like making different kinds of books, like playing clipsters and then making a book. Seeing other illustrators doing their work and stuff. And then trying such dive views that they use.
We write and discover new ways to show how to be authors.
Yeah, how do we discover those new ways of being an author?
By trying some out and reading other books to see what they offer.
Making books and writing.
Look at that cookie pie.
And learning stuff about other authors. We learn about other moves that you can use in a book. Like we read other books and then we use the moves that that author uses in their book and leaves in our book.
Yeah. That was amazing. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I think one of the things I just wanted to say is, you know, one of the things, I'm not sure if everybody in the room knows, is that these apps are available to the kids at home. And so my kid will just write a book on the weekend. Like she just wrote a book about a sloth, just on the weekend, just wrote it. The other day, one of those kids interviewed in that video, they wrote a poem about long bus rides on their bus ride home. Like it's just amazing. Like they feel so comfortable writing. And yeah, it's just a great, great skill. Yeah.
I'll second that. I have, we have one in the same grade and I've experienced that firsthand. And our daughter, just, she's, it's really generated that desire to do this outside of school. So she's doing it all the time. Illustrations.
And the author bios?
Yeah.
I mean, does not get cuter.
We told them when we were going to Ohio that we would take their names off all their bus. They were like, you will leave our name on.
Just a comment?
Yeah, please.
Ladies, your passion is, just comes across like gangbusters. I can feel it.
So flipping to math. A few of us had an opportunity in October to travel to Washington DC, where we attended the NCTN National Council for Teaching Math. My only regret is we didn't have cool T-shirts with phrases. But next time, we shall have funny math T-shirts. And we were able, instead of presenting, we actually went and we were able to choose from a variety of sessions over the course of three days to attend some together, some apart, just to grow our toolkit. And so we were going to share a little bit with you about what we learned.
And I think one of the really nice things was that the group of us that went didn't have experiences necessarily collaborating with each other prior to this experience. So it was a really great opportunity for us to make connections with each other across grade levels, with the math specialists, with admin. So it was a really nice group of people, kind of a cross-section from the school as an opportunity for us to talk about our teaching practice.
Because on the breaks, you still talk about math. All right, I can do this the whole time?
Yes.
Lunch break?
This session was the most exciting for me. I'm not going to even pretend to be able to pronounce his last name, but Peter, I'll call him Peter. He is basically our math idol. He is a world-renowned author and how we base a lot of our mathematics instruction in our classroom. So the fact that he was at this conference and we got to go see him was really exciting for us. So in Peter's book, he talks about 14 practices. And we've tried incorporating those in our classrooms. You can see I have some photos of my students. I teach second grade right now. This is what it looks like in a thinking classroom where students are collaborating on problem-solving together. And Peter's session was mostly about consolidation, which is the closing of the lesson and how you synthesize and wrap that up with your students and the importance of that. And probably the most challenging piece of the 14 practices. So Peter gave us some really great strategies to use about meaningful notes, checking for understanding questions. And we were really able to work with Hannah, who's our math specialist, and collaborate with each other around what that looks like in our classrooms. And definitely some conversations across grade levels around that.
We also learned he has more books coming out, so we're excited about that.
Yes, especially for K to 2. Yes, which is really exciting. And then something else that I was really excited about, I had always taught 3, 4, and 5 prior to this year. So being a lower elementary teacher, counting collections is a really powerful mathematics practice in the classroom. So I went to a session with teachers from Milwaukee, random, and about how they've used counting collections in their preschool through second-grade classrooms and what a powerful practice that can be. And you can see from the photos, they're a little bit small. But this is in my classroom. You are literally giving the kids collections of items and it's a really great practice because it's kind of like self-differentiating. So you'll have kids with a collection of 20 things and they're able to count to 20 and that's what they're working on. Up to you have kids making equal groups and working on multiplication and division with numbers from 100 to 300. And so it's a really wonderful practice for meeting the needs of all students. And the kids are able to work together. And we've kind of incorporated that throughout the school year. And I'm excited at the beginning of the school year, since I just implemented this like mid-year, to start the year off with this practice. So that's really exciting. It's really hard speaking into this microphone because you expect it to project, but it's not. So it's like.
All right. So I'm Katie Young. I teach third grade. I'm new to third grade. So this was actually a perfect one for me to go to about embracing math struggle and learning a lot of new concepts in third grade. So I was excited to kind of just re-ground myself in that idea of struggle and what it looks like in the classroom and how we can create communities of love. and how we can create communities of learners where that's the norm of the work that we do every day. And not just thinking about math struggle, but struggle in our everyday academic worlds as kids and as teachers. And so really valuing that struggle, fostering the identity within our students, building the community is probably the most important piece. And that's one that we're really intentional with as educators and helping our students build a community with us. So it's not us telling them how that's going to look. They're playing an active role in the norms and the values that we want to have within our community. And that really creates a level of getting unstuck, managing frustrations, working through challenges, taking risks. And then that productive struggle piece, I find that doing that early on in the year really helps create that atmosphere where we can grapple with ideas and work through them together. And then being intentional about revisiting that throughout the year. It's not just a beginning-of-the-year thing, but carrying that through. So that kind of really rejuvenated me, just starting the year out in November, thinking about how can I even build on that and the work that we've already done. And I was lucky enough to have my class for two years, so carrying from second grade into third grade. So we had done a lot of that groundwork, but remembering to keep that in the forefront of my mind as we work through struggle. And the other piece of that is just as teachers and educators, how we can model that with our students through even just our language. And, you know, instead of something, this is going to be really hard and gearing them up, this is hard, but we can take on this challenge together. So really, shifting that mindset, even in myself, really helps to impart that to students. And then, as I said, just with third grade, everything in math, we're building, but it's a lot of new concepts. And so I feel like this is something that has been really beneficial, and just taking on all those new strands of learning that we're going to build on from third, fourth, fifth grade and going deeper with that. So even though this is all stuff that is not new to us as educators at SMS, I think sometimes it's really helpful to be grounded in those big ideas. And we have so much going on, so it's like, oh, a quick reminder, like, yeah, I really need to focus on that and build on that. So I found that to be really kind of rejuvenating for me. The next one I attended was by Kathy Richardson. She's kind of a guru in the math world. And her work was all about maximizing number talks through models. Again, an idea that we use a lot, but I really liked the idea of having different scaffolds and models for students, kind of that concrete understanding. And then being able to build off that to get to the more abstract understanding for students. I found that that really gives our students an entry point, no matter where they are in their mathematics understanding. And also just the differentiation piece of them picking a model that's comfortable for them and then pushing them further in their understanding. There was one quote that really stuck with me, "It's not rigor when you are trying to remember what the teacher told you to do instead of trying to make sense of the problem." And so that's really the mindset that we have with students, is them taking ownership and charge of the work that they're doing, the collaboration that happens, they're discovering things together, they're sharing ideas. Having time to play and discover and work with those concrete materials really helps build that foundation and understanding that we want to carry through. So those were kind of the two that resonated with me. There was lots of great material, but even just thinking ahead to next year, I'm excited to kind of rebuild off that, too.
Hannah, our math specialist, wasn't able to attend tonight. Hannah and I spent our time there. We traveled to some sessions as a group. Hannah and I spent a lot of our time figuring out how can we support our teachers and understanding the progressions of how math thinking builds across time? How can we support them utilizing student data in their PLS and professional learning communities? So one of the sessions to highlight here is the O-GAP session. O-GAP is a research-based systematic formative assessment system, and it really looks how, at how students learn and how their thinking grows over time, so that when a student is demonstrating their understanding to you, you can kind of narrow it, like, here's the skills they have, and here are the skills they're demonstrating, and here's exactly what they need next. And we know that math builds on top of it, so that solid foundation is so important. But understanding what comes next, or if a student is falling short and understanding a concept, where do I back up to better fill in those gaps? So, no pun intended. So we attended some O-GAP sessions, as well as some professional learning community sessions, just to bring the learning back to our staff to support the work they do every day.
We just kind of wanted to thank you all for your support of being able to attend. I feel like, just had mentioned, it was, I'm newer to SMS, so I've been in SU sixteen a long time, but it's really nice to connect with my colleagues and get to know each other personally at a different level. And we couldn't get out with doing a little sightseeing. We had the most beautiful fall afternoons. And so after we did all the hard work of the day, we were able to get out and kind of see some of that. And I was even teaching like our civil rights unit at this time, so it was like really a nice tie-in to just being in Washington DC and how that plays a role and getting to share that with the kids, too. So not just math, but also learning some history and getting to see all that in real life was really an incredible, full experience. So we thank you for that opportunity and support.
We hit the absolute best weather.
Yeah, can't replicate.
No.
I think we walked eight miles.
It was a lot.
Carolyn, thank you. Does anybody on the board have any questions for the math team? I mean, I just may, want to make a comment, you know, when you travel and then you bring back that, all that information, it's, that's really great for us. And, you know, like Paul, I can see the enthusiasm and, you know, I know that's one thing that faces budget cuts, and so we appreciate the work you did.
And I think I just want to add, too, that I think for all of us, it's really, there's something really special about being able to go to a national conference in whatever, you know, subject area. It definitely is rejuvenating. It's wonderful to connect and to collaborate with, you know, people on our team, but also nationally. It's just a really powerful experience.
Yeah, wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's eight o'clock. Thank you.
Get out of here. Run, run.
Our kids will be here, what, twelve hours?
All right, I think we are ready for the building committee. Paul, are you going to go first?
I guess so.
Okay.
So, so I gave an update, I'll call it a status or my understanding of it last month. And as the chair, I'm pro, I guess I'm going to give one every month. Anyways, thank you for coming tonight. You know, I know many of you are here because of the proposed renovation and expansion. So we tried to put this update, we tried to put it close to the beginning, but I guess it didn't make that. But hopefully this update puts everybody on the same page, okay? And I'm not sure if we open it to public comment afterwards, where I know we had a public comment earlier, but. Anyways, we heard loud and clear at the district meeting that the town is hurting from tax increases. Because of that feedback, we are drastically shifting priorities. The last scope and estimate cost of this project was going to be up to fifty million dollars. We want to be very clear that we are no longer moving with, forward with that plan. Most of, most of those in front of you today were not in place when this first started. Now, partly because of that, of this, of this change in hands, a subcommittee has been formed, currently consisting of myself as chair, Sophie Saltinsalt, Vice Superintendent Chris Sandrisky, Principal Kate Lucas, and Facilities Director Tim Harrington. We've met twice to date. In the first meeting, Kate was asked to reexamine educational needs with the goal of paring it down to what she believes are the minimum necessary requirements. The next task is to pull together a larger subcommittee of individuals from the town with expertise in areas such as construction, energy, safety, et cetera. A call for volunteers will be posted this week, and on June third, the subcommittee will make its selections. These selections will then be proposed to the full board to make its final selections on June fifteenth. Subsequently, the new subcommittee will meet monthly throughout the summer. With experts on the subcommittee, it will be better equipped to determine the scope of the building repairs and maintenance must-haves. For example, I believe we agree, improving energy efficiency today begins lowering monthly energy costs almost immediately. After studying the history, I proposed a multi-step process of first fix and then renovate. Still, as only one of the committee, I agreed to look at a single-step approach first. If it appears too costly, the alternative will be to look at it in steps to make it, to make the cost as tolerable as possible for taxpayers. The subcommittee hopefully will also be better equipped to discuss efficient ways of handling a physical expansion if required. The less extensive set of educational and building requirements will then go out to the architect with whom the school has been working with a request for an estimate. With the scope defined and an estimate secured, the board will conduct an outreach to communicate what is being proposed and answer questions. Finally, a warrant article will be written, and the town will be asked to vote on a not-too-exceed amount. Subsequent to the vote, an RFP will go out to the community at large soliciting competitive bids from qualified construction companies. Thank you.
Okay. Sophie, do you have anything you want to add?
I would just add that we're listening. We can't always respond directly to comments on Facebook or things of that nature because of legal reasons and their, you know, procedures for how we can communicate. So just know that we're listening to everything that's being said, and because of the feedback, we are no longer moving forward with that larger project. So thank you all for your voices and involvement. And we want to, we, we, we take our jobs very seriously. The feedback that we've heard of folks not being able to pay bills is honestly heartbreaking. I don't take that lightly as a school board member. I know none of us do. So thank you for raising that, and we are moving forward as carefully as possible while addressing the needs of the school. So thank you for your feedback. Please continue to give us feedback, and we will do our best to be open with communication, both in meetings and in updates. And I'll talk about the communication piece in a minute in my communication committee update.
Thank you. I guess I just have a question, if I could. If somebody was interested in joining the committee, how would they do so?
Uh, Chris?
So I shared a letter with you that we'd like to post tomorrow. I also have it here, so you can take a look at.
Okay.
Calling out for the community, and we'll put it out like we did for our school board interest. So that we can collect those names and look at the names and their qualifications on June third.
Does that go on the SMS website?
It will. Yep. So we'll get it out as many different communication avenues and platforms that we can, so we can solicit and get the, the most qualified and best group to support us with it. One thing I do want to add is, thank you, Paul and Sophie. That was, that was great. One of the tasks of this committee is also to do at least three community, community conversations. So we want to bring the community in when we start looking at the project to get more, more feedback. Our first would look like September, when we get back to school, bring the community in as we continue to work on this project and look at the needs. So we continue to look at it, and we can hear where are we on the right spot before we even be able to get it to the town to look at a final budget number in March. So that is one major part of this large committee, to be able to get to those community conversations.
Are we going to talk about the minutes from last month at some point?
We will, yes.
Okay, all right. I'll mention it then.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have any comment or questions?
I have just a quick question. What does the format of those community conversations look like?
Yeah, so again, we'll talk about it, but I can tell you from previous experience of going through a renovation project for seven years at my previous district. It was a time for us to talk about, are we on the right spot in regards to the educational needs for our students and also the facility needs of your building, and how do they impact that? So that's what we've been doing as the building committee. When you do a building project, you start with the ed specs that Paul talked, that Kate has been going through, because that looks at your, all your needs and your spaces in a building. That's what the architect builds to take, to build the scope, so you can look at the maps and where everything is laid out. And from there, you continue to vet it and look at it and say, do, are all these spaces needed, necessary? As you know, we talked about, do we need an additional gym? Well, that's, that's a lot, that's a huge space, right? And the building project goes up based on square footage, so that might not be something that we suggest, just because we can't afford it. It would be nice to have, but is that a way to do it? So is there other alternatives we could do in regard to this space, i.e. the cafeteria? We, we've talked about expanding that out so that we can only get two lunches, but also use it as a PE space, which we currently do now. So that's the job of that committee, is to look at alternatives and also know the financial responsibility that we can put in front of the taxpayers, because we do know the impact that it does have.
Are we going to reopen for public comment?
We can, yes. Yeah. I just want to make sure the board has enough time to say maybe what they're.
I just wanted to add one thing. I would love to see in the updates, the tax impact, the tax effort impact. I'm looking at Molly because Molly's so good at helping us understand what that is. And I know we have to kind of extrapolate how things might look going forward. I think we're always going to see budget increases around health insurance, premiums, and all these things that just, we have very limited control over. I think it'd be really helpful to not just put it in terms of like a big dollar value, like however many millions of dollars or whatever it is, but what the tax impact is going to be over what period of time, so that we can still factor in the other stuff. I think that's much easier to conceptualize for people, and I'd love to hear about it in those terms when we're presenting options. We can definitely do that. We just need to know, like, if we were bringing this to the, the bond bank, that's typically where a big project comes, what's the length of the bond? Because you have different interest rates based on the length, and then also the assessment piece. So if we were to use, say, that this was going to happen over a twenty-five-year period, if you're comfortable with that as being a starting point, then we could definitely ask the bond bank when we start to get into numbers, and you can see the tax impact over that twenty-five years. I think, I think the optionality would be the best, and, and the reason for that is what we probably need to do, and I think, this is like a frustration of mine, is that we've come into this situation where there are things that need to be done, and there's not a whole lot of capital reserves to do that. So we need to build up the capital reserves again. So we're going to be asking to do something, and then we're also going to be asking to put more into those capital reserves over time, so we don't get in this position again. And so I think if we can figure out how, what those lengths of time are, and we can find out what the tax impact is, that'll kind of help us to determine the other goal that we have, which is kind of building back up on that capital reserve, so that we're not going to ask for a bond again in ten, twenty, thirty years. So we, we can definitely add that in once we get a dollar figure. That's, that's not, that's not.
Need a dollar figure, yeah.
I know one of the things I'm really looking forward to, as well as, is getting in those community meetings. You know, even at the start of this public comment period, there were things said that are, are not correct. And so it'll be great to have a community conversation. I'm just wondering for Paul and Sophie, can you give us examples of some of the people that might be involved in this board and would then be involved in, in going out to the community? Like, what kind of, what kind of diversity of committee are you looking for? Do you want to answer that first, Paul?
Well, I mean, if, if I had my choice, it would be individuals from STRATAM that have expertise in commercial building infrastructure and the major systems that go into them. HVAC is a big one, and heating, right? I mean, the boilers. Also, the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, roofing systems, things like that. So if we've got people that are knowledgeable about those, those items, as well as looking at cost-effective ways to design a building. So you can design a building that's beautiful, okay? It's beautiful, but it's, and it's functional, but it's costly, okay? Now, maybe, maybe we need to look at something that is primarily functional to keep the cost down. So, I mean, there are people that do that. People in the commercial real estate industry take buildings, and they make them much more functional for least cost. Those are the type of people that I'd like to see. Now, as well, we know, we want to see people who are knowledgeable about the environment and energy efficiency and things like that. So, that, on the, on the surface, that's my hit parade.
Yeah, and maybe some community partnerships, folks who can help us communicate with the broader public about what's happening would be helpful as well.
Yeah, I know people from the town have, have shown an interest in joining, like, from the Energy Commission. You know, I'd love to see older taxpayers, younger taxpayers, people with no kids, people with kids. It'd be nice to see a good representation on there.
Yeah, it won't be a fifty-person committee, but we will be having monthly meetings throughout the summer, and we'll be reporting out each month what we discuss.
Okay. Anything else? You look like you're.
I was just going to make a motion for like, it, it, maybe we could just poll the audience. Is there anybody who would like to speak? So we have a sense of how many people might like to speak. One, two, for sure, three? All right, I'd like to make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to open public comment for ten minutes, and.
Great. Yeah, and I would say maybe just a two-minute cap, and that would be great. I would love to hear.
Do we need to pull that microphone over?
I think we need a second.
I'll second.
All right, all, all in favor? Four, zero. Four, zero, zero? Five?
Five.
Five.
Zero. Yay! Feels good, doesn't it?
Yes.
Also, public comment can be on other things. You know, we did talk about the PFOA issue, so also welcome questions on that as well. And just as a preface, you know, when, when you come to the microphone and you do have questions or some of them are easy, we can answer right away. Some of them maybe just require a little bit more research on our behalfs and so it is not hesitancy, you know? It's just making sure that we have the most accurate information, but we will always get back to you at the next meeting or, you know, I'll send you an email later this week. So just with that understanding. But welcome our first commenter if there's any public comment. Yes, Pat?
Pat Abramey again, Toll Pines Drive. First on the building, I agree 100% with the strategy. I hope we get to a point that we have an agreement with all parties in, before the bond discussion happens at the end of this. It's all about the children and I support it. Clearly, the building needs some work. I said that in the last meeting, so absolutely do all of that. So I can go on and on about that, but I won't. So I think we're on the right track. We've got to keep on working at it. The only question I have there is who eventually will pick these other members of the committee? Is it the board, the five board members?
So there is a building subcommittee. Paul and Sophie are both on it, so that's.
So the subcommittee will do that.
Well, wait a minute. Let me, let me clarify. There's a policy for everything, okay? There's the STRATIM School Board Advisory Committees to the Board. So it's called BDF. And essentially what it says is, as the subcommittee, we can go out and solicit people to join, okay? And then we, either individually or as a subcommittee, we bring those people that we select to the board and the board makes the final decisions.
Okay.
I personally like that because as a small subcommittee, you know, it takes, it takes any, you know, disagreements and confrontation out and puts it in a separate, in a separate entity to make the decisions and then everybody's happy.
Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. And about PFAS, you know, the biggest problem we have in town is by the fire station, most of us know that, and people around the fire station, because of the foam they used to use and the way they clean the equipment. And the town's providing free water to residents in that, that area. So, and I forgot the other thing I was going to talk about and I probably, my two minutes is probably up anyway, so thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Steve Patton to Shirley Lane. I want to thank all the candidates who stepped forward to apply to the board. I think that takes some boldness and I want to congratulate the new member, so that's great. I also want to, I want to thank the board and the school for their flexibility in stepping back from the big plan and looking at more of the pieces. And I have a question that will take some research and then a comment that might be of assistance. So my question is, who exactly borrows the money? Does the town borrow the money or does the school district borrow the money? And whose budget does that become part of? So I think it'd be great to just kind of put out a statement at some point with, unless there can be an answer now.
I'd like an answer. I know you can, so yes.
So it would be the school district borrowing the bond. So they would go most likely to the New Hampshire Bond Bank. There are other options, but the bond bank always has the most competitive rates and we would have to pick the duration of the bond. And then what happens is you would have to raise and appropriate that in your annual meeting as a warrant article to be able to do that. And then each year, there would be a bond principal amount and interest amount and it's paid twice a year.
Okay.
And so it'd be part of the STRATIM Elementary School budget.
Great. And where exactly does the principal part go? Does it go to a sinking fund? And then, you know, when the bond falls due, it's all paid at the end or?
So there's a bond schedule from the bond bank and it lays out how much goes to principal and how much goes to interest. So what happens is we get the bond proceeds when the sale happens and then we hold it in our bank account and pay the project.
So the, so it's almost, so it becomes almost like a mortgage instead of we have a sinking fund and then we liquidate the sinking fund when it's due. The bond bank takes care of that.
Right, so the bond bank pays us when the bond sale happens. We pay the vendor or whoever's doing the work. So we only bond the amount we need to pay this person or company. And then we pay off the bond over the length of the duration of the bond.
Okay. And I didn't know that piece. That was great. I could, I was looking for that kind of thing, couldn't find it. I've been reading about the bond bank and I noticed that one of the things I said is that the duration of the assets that you build or buy affect your ability to choose the duration of the bond. So one thing you'll want to be thinking about is if the first project is just boilers, not that it would be, but if it was and boilers last 15 years, that's the duration of your bond. So that may help you when you're trying to figure out, okay, this scope of project is this tax impact, you know, and as you had said, you know, the duration affects that. That's all going to feed into that part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So JNT to Country Farm Road. I spoke to this nice gentleman and I keep forgetting his name.
Her name's Chris.
Chris. And I love what I heard about the additional communication out to us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I like that you're hearing us. I like what you said, Sophie. I like what you said because we are hurting from multiple angles. As you all know, you probably are all hurting as well in your own homes, households, taxes, federal taxes, other schools. So thank you to all of you for reconsidering or looking at it a different way, creating a committee and subcommittee. Thank you, Paul, and all of the hard work I'm sure you're doing as a new board member. So I just want to say thank you and please keep the communication coming. And I also love what you said. I don't remember, Eric, I love the idea of understanding how this impacts our taxes. One year, three years, five years, what this will do, what that will do. Because again, we have to, if you go to the regular town meeting, you'll hear, we're going to raise that 1% or you go somewhere else and it all just comes jumbles together. So understanding how all this works is really important. So I love what you said about that as well. So just really a thank you for listening to us and keep the communication coming. Okay? Thank you.
That's what you call positive feedback.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, we'll let it go for, we have another four minutes, so if anybody thinks of anything, we'd love to hear it.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, sure.
Just off of that, I think one, another committee member that we would love to have is somebody who has an understanding of the town in general and the inner workings of what's happening in the town so they can be like, oh, actually, the fire department's about to ask for X amount and the subcommittee is really going to think through, once we have the full scope of what we must have, how to break that up into pieces, what's the strategy and how can we do that in the smartest way possible for taxpayers? So thank you for your feedback. We are taking it very seriously. And I will definitely keep communicating.
Okay. I think we need to go backwards a little bit and look at approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes, the public minutes of April 17th?
I do. I'd like, I'd like the update that I gave in the last meeting included in the minutes verbatim because that goes on the website and anybody who wants to follow what's been going on can just read the update. So I could provide that electronically. Can we add that to the minutes from the last meeting and going forward?
Does anybody have any comments on that?
No, so just for this one, do you email Sharon or what would the process be for this to make sure your update today will go in these minutes?
I'm guessing I would email the individual who is giving us our packet for the upcoming, because then our packet has the meetings from the last one. So I can send that individual last, for last month.
Well, the finalized notes get published after we approve them tonight.
Okay, well.
Is that right?
Yeah, so just a reminder, your minutes are usually not verbatim because it's not a transcript of your meeting. It's, by law, it's when you make motion and there's board member conversation, so it's not going to be a transcript. If you'd like to provide something as an amendment to it, that's, that's what I think you're talking about, Paul. So there can be amendment to it, but I just don't want to get into a habit of a transcript. When we're in a three-hour meeting, that's going to be about 80 pages.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, no, I just.
For clarity and making sure that we're having it, the board knows, we can definitely put anything as an attachment to our board packet in our minutes and that would be just the wording that I would use in regard.
What, yeah, whatever, an amendment, that's fine, just so long as people can read and read the updates every month and say, oh, yeah, this is, this is what they were going to do, this is what they did, this is what they're doing, you know, that type of thing.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. I think the one thing I just want to make sure is that there's a reflection of the committee as a whole and not just one person. So that's where.
It's a good point. This, this was a cooperative.
Okay.
Between Sophie and me.
Okay. So you're all looking at it.
And, and you know, when the one that I, I gave last month, I gave a caveat. The way it all worked out, you know, Sophie and I didn't have a chance to confer on it and I said that she may have a different view at that time. So, but we were able to, to confer on this one.
Did you have something?
I just have a question about, and I don't know the answer, so Chris, if you have an answer, I'd appreciate it.
Can you speak up?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry for the water. It's, I'm. Yes, I can speak up. I have a fabulous principal voice. God, this poor person. I just have a question about that because I think we're working really hard on talking about accuracies and facts and I worry about when we put something that's verbatim, if there's information that is not fact or is not accurate. Part of that is because Sophie and Paul are brand new to the committee, so there's a lot of information that you don't have yet because you haven't, we haven't had enough meetings to flush through all the history and all the documents in its entirety. And I don't want that to be mistaken for fact in some of those things. And I think that that's really important, that we're representative of things that are factual. And so I just, and I don't know how that works if that goes in there as fact.
Well, you know, it's an update, right? I can, I can always state that this update, you know, it has some generalizations in it, you know, disclaimer.
I just mean in general, period, not just for your thing. I just mean in general, when we put something verbatim, for me, it changes the flavor of a minute.
Yep, but it's an amendment.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
So we could definitely have it be a report from the chair. So it is reflective of the report from the chair. We could definitely put input at a, when the minutes come out of if there was just any discrepancies here at this meeting. But if it's a report from the chair and that's what the chair is reporting out, then I think we just need to, in our, in our meetings, just make sure that we have, we're all in alignment with what was being put out there for Paul.
So you want me to call it a report from the chair?
I think that would be the most because that would be the most accurate because it's a reflection of what the chair.
And a report from the, a report from the chair amendment?
Or just an attachment. So you're attaching a report to the chair.
Attachment, okay, fair enough.
Minutes for the meeting.
At the meeting, could you guys potentially talk about what goes in that report just collectively at the end of the meeting? That might be the easiest way to generate that than just go fresh out of a meeting with all hands on deck. Just thought.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I just think, I think there's going to be a lot of conversations and there's going to be different opinions. And so then if it just gets posted as is, you know, so I think, you know, you should take a look at it too and just make sure it reflects accurately.
You need a motion? Motion to accept the minutes with the inclusion of the attach, the, the building committee update attachment.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. You'll do an extension on this one. Yeah.
All right. Any extensions?
Yes.
Yeah, so four, zero, one.
Got it.
For the public minutes of April 17th. What about for the non-public minutes? Any edits or do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as is.
Do I have a second?
You want to do your first second?
I can say.
I'll second. Paul seconds.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstain. So four, zero, one.
No.
All right. Molly?
All right. Okay, so I did send you guys the financial report separate from the board back. So you know, we went, we went in software conversion April 1st, so it's been quite, quite a roller coaster for our office. But this is the first financial out of the new software. So just for reference on how I have it structured, we always have the detail line by line behind it, but I put a summary page on top because instead of you sorting through every single line item every month, what I do is in the upper left-hand corner in this bluish color, I put what the changes are from the prior month. And then in the bottom with the green is the revenue different than planned, could be higher, it could be lower. This is the calculation of your fund balance that's projected to offset taxes in the next tax cycle because what you end with this year goes to offset what you have to raise next year. We have some trust funds, so the trust funds are, I like to call them rainy day funds. So if a student moves in that has special needs, we have a special education trust fund that would support tuition for an outpatient placement. Or if, I don't want this to happen, let's say the boiler breaks tomorrow, we have a maintenance, building maintenance trust fund to fund some projects of that. And then in the bottom corner, I always put what the previous year fund balances are because if you give back a lot one year and not so much the next year, you're creating swings in the tax rate. So sometimes at year end, we make decisions to kind of stabilize that tax rate. So since last month, we did add $124,606. We had some ups and some downs. This time of year, we always tell all of the schools that if you don't need it by now, you probably don't need it before the end of June because we need everything to be here and use this fiscal year to account for it this fiscal year. So we always see that push of last-minute purchasing around the April vacation timeframe. And then we had some substitutes. We paid out the mentor salaries. We had some adjustments related to our hourly staff, the ESPs, as we entered the new system, we took a real hard look at how many days are left to encumber that amount of time. We had some special ed-related services. I did put the vendors on here, what that's for. We did have a few positions specifically related to psych services, media, and I think an assistant maintenance position where they had remained unfilled. We kind of took them down a little bit each time, but I've just blown them away now because we're already in May, so we took those out. We did have some education reimbursement for some employees. We had some technology purchases and the big one was facilities and maintenance. There was some flooring, PELMAC and some work related to doors. Did anyone have any questions on any of those expenses? Great. So what happens is your fund balance at the end of the year is a combination of your expense less than planned and revenue of more than planned. And so that's where we get to that $678,000 because we are seeing a lot more in earnings and investment. We had more tuition. We had significantly more special ed come in, which when you enter school year, they say we might give you this, have this amount of money to give you. So it's really not a good indication of what you're really going to get. So we always have to be conservative in our estimates. So if you, as a new board member, want to sit down and discuss how school finances work, I am happy to do it because the more you know, the easier it is for me. And same with any of you, if you want to run for the board, I'm happy to sit with you[1730.54] at any point in time.
Thank you. That'd be awesome.
So that's everything I had. And then the manifests I have right here, so thank you for sending us.
How much did you say is probably going to be left at the end of this school year?
So that is at this point in time, there's still going to be more substitutes because we don't encumber for subs, but right now, the projection would be $678,801, which is in the file that I sent you.
Yeah.
So right now, the projected remaining expense is $566, but 112 revenue more than planned. So those two added together give you not to offset the tax rate.
The other big piece of that, which we mentioned last week, last month that we didn't, is that we budgeted for 10 buses.
Yes.
We have seven, so there's a huge unanticipated revenue because we don't have, there are no bus drivers nationally. So we, that was a huge savings for us. I just want to be careful about like, not inflating the budget like we over-budgeted. We actually had things we could not fill.
Correct. And so in this blue section, I just listed the changes from the last time I reported to you. If you really want to see overall, if you look in the detail report and you look on the budget balance section, and where you see the high numbers and the transportation's going to be in your 2,700s, that's going to show you where there's actual budget savings for the whole year.
Okay.
So did any of us have any questions?
I'm set up with like an email and a place for you to send it.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, I'll take care of that for you tomorrow.
And are we deciding in the fall or in the next meeting where to allocate the extra fund balance?
So Kate is saying to.
That's a conversation for tonight.
Oh, okay. Tonight.
Not right now, but it's a conversation under new business, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. So to answer your question, it has to be done before the fiscal year. So fiscal year-end is June 30th. So we have to have all purchase orders in by June 30th for it to count for this.
And work has to be started as well. So that's why it's a May issue.
Yeah, and there are certain situations, like if you're going to pay the parking lot, you can't do that when students are in the building. So if the board makes the motion to do it over the summer, then they can do it.
Yeah, that is a lot of money.
And so just keep in mind, you can't expend the revenue portion, but you have the appropriation to spend.
Okay.
All right, any questions for?
Signature food service procurement?
Yes, so you have the form in front of you, just need you to sign it. We wanted to talk about it. That is the changes that will be happening as of June 1st. Again, that's Jean Pierce, our director of food services, works really closely with Ann. So that's the changes, Ann's looked it over.
I might have taken that back. Yeah, I might have given that back to you, Molly, in error.
That's what that document is, so thank you.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much.
If you want to keep it.
Anything before we let Molly go?
Give her this one, too.
All right, moving on to board reports. Policy committee, we're actually just tonight going to do a first reading on policies because there are so many and because we knew it was going to be so late. So we're going to do a first reading and then we'll, I'm happy to take any questions from anybody and then we'll report out next month. Does anybody have any questions about the policies that were in your board packet?
I do.
Yeah.
And I have, in the interest of time, I will email those to you.
Okay.
And I'll be sure that we discuss them next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Anything, any others? All right, great. Eric, superintendent, evaluation committee.
Yeah, thank you, Jen. So we are, we met this past, last week, just to kind of recap where we are with that. The 360 evaluation, which was sort of the feedback from the larger audience of stakeholders that interface with Esther, was sent out. That feedback has come back in. And what we wanted to do was really sort of, if you recall, there's sort of this sort of bifurcated process. So one is where Dr. Azbell has presented the goals that she, that were agreed upon with the committee. And then we took that feedback as a board and we did that last meeting, we sort of boiled that up. All of the various boards brought that information back, so we synthesized that during the meeting last week. What's still outstanding is to take that 360 feedback and to sort of create themes and to be able to present those themes with some data metrics for the Monday joint board meeting. My understanding on that is that Esther, I believe, and of course, you can change your mind on this, I believe, at any time, but she wanted to have that initial presentation done in public.
Correct.
So that was really nice, so we'll be able to do that if she's still amenable to that. And then, of course, we'll go into non-public to discuss in any more detail and anything that might be impacting that related to any board feedback, joint board feedback. So please be prepared on Monday that you'll get your first read on that information. It'll be presented at that time and then we'll be able to provide feedback. I think that's great, right where we are. Yep.
Thank you so much, Eric. And so that meeting is Monday evening, the joint board meeting. And I would love to get your contact info and we can talk at some point this week and we'll bring you up to speed.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
All right, awesome. Any questions on the superintendent evaluation? Okay. Safety and security task force. So right now, that's an open committee. If any current board members have interest in changing committee assignments, let me know. Otherwise, that's an open position and perhaps you would consider joining that. It looks like, Chris, the meeting is on the 23rd?
It is the 23rd. It's usually during the day, though, so I don't know how that affects your work schedule, Tanya.
Yeah, I do nine to five.
Yeah, so it'd be.
Policy committee might be a better fit for you then?
I also work full-time.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, we will talk about it and figure that out, yeah. Okay, SAU communications.
Yeah, so for communications, I think when you were the chair of the communications, it was really focused on a specific survey, right? And then that kind of wrapped up. So communications is kind of taking on a new era, I would say. And I think for me, the priorities are communications with the public and being very transparent, particularly about the building committee. So that's going to be, and just the board in general. I'm very focused on transparency and communication with the town. I think that's something that we need to improve upon. And so, yeah, as you may have heard from our last meeting, I put together a proposal for each, after each meeting, to have a summary go out in three newsletters, the select board newsletter, the PTO newsletter, and just the stratum newsletter. So I'll continue doing that. And then in terms of the building committee updates, I'll just fold those in with those updates. And I'm working on a full kind of building committee outreach communication plan that I will also be workshopping in that subcommittee, but really trying to think strategically about how we can be proactive, not only communicating, but getting feedback with town members about the building committee to make sure that we're as transparent as possible. So I'm putting together a proposal that we will then, in the building committee subgroup, will kind of tighten up and then it'll be reported back in this committee and to the public in general.
Can I get copies of your newsletters?
Yeah, well, I send, so the way we're, the process is, is after our meetings, Sharon will email me the notes from the transcript, not the transcript, she'll write notes, she sends them directly to me. I write a summary. I'm sending that to Chris to distribute to you all for feedback within 24 hours to me. And then after you approve that version, that's what goes out to those three newsletters. So you will have that.
Do you get the select board newsletter?
Also the email right from Sophie.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Did you get it? You should have gotten it last month. Did you get an email from Chris last month?
Yeah, so I, so, you know, my SAU email isn't real time. I have to go on and look, so I don't necessarily get a chance to look at it every day. So the 24-hour thing is an issue, could be an issue. I try to keep up with it, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can, you want me to, I can text you when it goes out.
And I'll, I'll, I'll keep an eye out for it.
Yeah. Eric, is that, are you good with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with it. And thank you for, I really liked this. I like what you're doing with it. I think it's great.
Thanks.
Like, I like the blurbs, I like how they're being incorporated, I think even in the newsletter, yeah, everything, like it's.
Great, thank you.
It's going in the right direction.
Sounds good. I think this really just speaks to like the level of transparency that the town wants. And, yeah, you said that there, you know, you're going to be having like a nice summary. I think it kind of speaks to what Paul wants, which is just a little bit more of like a clear summary of exactly what was said and things like that. So I think it's great.
Awesome. And you're here because of that communication.
I am, yes.
So great.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, the lawyer in me is always worried about sort of the subtlety, you know? There's nothing like actually being here at these meetings and reading the notes. But, you know, I 100% appreciate the blurbs and I've seen people reacting to them, so that's great. But it's also great to come to the meetings. Okay, just moving on to the chair update. One of the things I was thinking I would do is just report a little bit, you know, I get quite a few emails as chair. So some of the emails I got this month were about the PFAS issue. Obviously, got emails about the building committee. I got emails about, from Seacoast Online, looking for information on the building committee. So we had, we had quite a few correspondence this month. Next month, we're going to talk about the schedule for the next year. One of the things that was really meaningful to me is having these monthly updates that the Kate, that Kate and the team do on various issues. And I would love our two board members to weigh in sort of on those monthly topics of information. So I was thinking maybe in June, we can talk about our schedule for the next year and maybe also propose sort of a retreat day, maybe in August or something like that, where we could kind of talk about what those topics of conversation might be for the 24, 25 school year. Another thing that was really meaningful to me, too, is the stratum board goals. And I would love them to reflect, you know, our new board members. So maybe next month in June, bring your calendars and we can talk about the schedule for the next year. And then I just wanted to make a one note about, I was grateful for the MTSS conversation that you all did. I thought it was a creative way to really talk about it. You know, it's obviously a very complicated thing, but you all approached it, you know, very openly and people had so many questions and you were open. And so I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. That's all I have for chair report.
I have a question based on something you said. I also got contacted by media about the, so what is the protocol for me as like a communications person? Should I refer them to you?
Yeah.
Like, should I say, please just contact Jennifer? Like, what should I do with media requests?
Yeah, I think so. I did invite them to this board meeting. I don't know if they're here. Oh, okay. And, yeah. Is there a protocol on how that works?
Well, yeah, typically, the board chair is responsible for the communications of the board.
Okay.
So other, you can send any emails you get to Jen and just say, just want to let you know. Or you can just simply say, thank you, gotten it, and then let Jennifer know that this person has reached out to you. But Jennifer would be responsible for any communication on behalf of the board as her role as chair.
Okay. All right.
And then, sorry, one other question about communication. On Facebook specifically, if there's like a chain, there have been several posts about the building project that I have been very tempted to respond to, but have not. Should I, is that, should I just say like, hey, I'll come to our next meeting, it's here, or you can find the minutes and public information that we've put out here? Or should I not say anything?
Yeah, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would be very comfortable with that. I think where I don't want to go is, you know, the school's actually called Stratum Memorial School, or, you know, whatever we want to say in response. Obviously, we're seeing the posts. I don't want to really get into a debate and there's so much, you know, there are facts, right? And so I don't want to get into a debate on those facts. I think the best information is to come to these meetings, but I would be very comfortable if you replied with that information.
Okay. How does everyone else feel?
How does everyone else feel?
Yeah, I, so I don't go on stratum talks at all, so I don't know what's being said. But I, I'm comfortable with, I think you should urge people to come to the meeting. I mean, we've said it a number of times, that's where you get the most accurate information. And if you don't understand it, you can get up to the microphone and, you know, I'm, hopefully we might be able to clarify an easy question or something like that. Yeah. And then if there's going to be a report from the building committee chair that is an amendment to the minutes, you could say that.
Yeah.
And that's, that's pretty.
I agree with the minutes.
Yeah, you know, take a look at, take a look at what was attached to the minutes and come to the meetings. And that's the best way to learn what's going on.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. I think social media can definitely not be the best place to have some of these discussions. So I totally agree with leading folks to resources that how is that accurate information and those facts as much as possible. So definitely think we should respond in some way, but guide them to resource, it sounds good.
And Jennifer, if I would, I'd recommend that just, if anybody's, please come to our meeting, because remember, the board is a board of five, meeting in public. So this is your meeting to have in public so that people can hear it and see it. Responding on a private or different chats can be taken as one board member speaking on behalf of the board, so I'd really urge not to do that, because that is where you could be liable as a board, saying or communicating things that are not on behalf of the entire board.
Yeah. And I think, too, we discussed so many things, right? I mean, you just saw some teachers presenting, you know, there's, there's so many issues that we talked about at the board meeting, so it's great to hear it all. All right, thank you, everyone. Kate, do you have an administrative report?
No, we just included the MTSS for the board members that were unable to attend. And then the presenters tonight with the two groups that you guys had approved for the national conferences and.
Yeah, so those MTSS slides are attached and they'll be on the website as well?
Correct. They'll also get attached to my newsletter. I did use, I did replace a couple of them, just that there was no student information.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, thank you. All right, looking at old business, communications discussions, is this about the microphones?
I don't know, is it?
I was going to bring that up as new business, but.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
I also want to talk about that. People can't hear us and that's a problem.
In this room, people can't hear us?
Yeah, I think in this, I've gotten feedback in this room and online, both.
I think this setup is problematic. So, you know, these microphones, as I understand it, they are there to get our voices to the people at home.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yet the people at the end of the room can't hear us. So I have a couple of recommendations. Number one, that we go to either clip-on mics or wireless headset mics, because when you, you know, you're moving your head around, this goes in and out, and I know that the gentleman who, who does the video, he has a problem with that. Okay? And regardless of whether we use clip-on or whether we use a wireless headset, we need a speaker in the back of the room that the microphone is amplified through that speaker so the people in the back of the room can hear what we're saying. So we're not screaming for them and then screaming into this?
Yeah.
It's just, just the setup that we have right now just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Just a couple of things. Paul and I had also talked about a second new line here, we really like one that faces you and then one that faces the audience that would need to be like that. But the other part is we do have the speaker capability, we just don't have the mic capability. We have like two JBL, like speakers that we use to play music outside or like Jump for a Cause. So I think if you're thinking about like financially, you wouldn't need, we have two giant JBL speakers, you would just need the PEL mics. And then the new line would be a second cause, I just wanted to add that to your conversation.
What are those things you wore at the MTSS presentation? What are those things you wore at the MTSS presentation?
So, those are.
The Red Cat.
Yeah, they're a Red Cat. So, they're like an FM system. And historically, they were used if you had students that might have, you know, some disabilities with their hearings or that. But what we found, the research is really clear that particularly for young children that are developing sounds and learning to be, to read and to write and to speak, it can actually be like hugely helpful for them even if they don't have any hearing complications. And so, we have them in all of our rooms. So, you see them in every of our related arts spaces as well as in our classrooms. I don't know that they're strong enough.
Okay.
To give you, so that, you've seen that tower speaker?
Yeah.
I don't know that that would be strong enough.
Okay.
And there's only one connection at a time with that. So, you'd really want to do like a JBL where you can have multi, multiple connections.
Okay.
But the Red Cats are great.
Yeah. And how would it be if I had a mic and a mic?
I don't.
Do they?
I don't think you could have two mics like that. You get feedback, okay? So, you know, maybe, I don't know how we do it. Can we research it? Can someone research it and look into what our options are and then present what the options are and we can go from there?
Yeah. How would we handle that, Chris?
So, I would contact Eric Chellis, who broadcasts this.
Okay.
And he's in charge of all audio for SAU 16. And let him know if that's a wish for the board to look to purchase microphones, that we could do that. It's part of what we'd be talking about. We do have a large end-of-year surplus that could come out of there because it is facilities-based and it's also safety and accessibility-based, which are categories you could use for that under the year fund balance.
Do other districts use microphones, lapel?
No. But you're, you have three member boards, which are much smaller.
Yeah.
And their setup is a little bit different. So, it's not as difficult. The room is not as big as this. And then, there are other boards that are live-streamed and a little bit different, like our joint board, you can hear.
Yeah.
There's microphones.
Okay. No, I think that's great and thank you for bringing it. I'll reach out to Eric.
Yeah, I can do that.
I think we all brought it up.
The other thing I know Paul has brought up is the public comment. And I definitely want the public comment. I think we all do. You know, there's sort of a state law that it's 30 minutes, 30 minutes at the beginning?
Can be anytime.
It can be anytime.
It just has to be 30 minutes. You cannot leave a meeting until 30 minutes.
Yeah. And so, the joint board, the way they do it is they do it at the beginning of the meeting, just, you know, people are busy and they want to say something. I think what we've been doing the last few minute, last few meetings is opening it up again after perhaps there's a controversial or, you know, a topic that there's public interest in. I would feel comfortable doing that. You know, I've been to meetings where there's no attendees. And so, this idea that we would mandate 20 minutes at the beginning, 20 minutes at the end for an empty room, I don't know.
Well, I'm, you know, Eric had a good idea. You can start the public comment. If there's nobody that wants to comment, you let the time go by and then you just say, "Public comment period is over."
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And we go on with the, with other business. I was going to, I know it's, I know it's a law that says 30 minutes of comment, right? I don't know if you can change the law, but I was going to suggest two 20-minute periods of comment and questions. I know you would, you would mention questions. The concern is, you don't have the answer to the question. Okay? Or maybe you know some of it, you need to research it. All that's fair. So, if a person has a question and it's an easy question, we know the answer to it, I'm suggesting that we answer it. If it's not, the person, there's a, there's a pad where the person can write down their name and their email address and we can email the answer to that person in a timely fashion rather than making them come back to hear it. You know, if we're trying to outreach and we're trying to communicate.
Yeah.
You know, and it's been said before, you know, you come to the meetings and there's a microphone there, the knee-jerk reaction is they want to ask a question. So, I'm asking the board to discuss that.
Yeah. What do board members think?
Well, yeah, the RSA is pretty clear. It's 30 minutes. So, that's, we need to follow that. And I think they wanted to do that to make sure that, that nobody gave short shrift to public comment. We have our own policy, so I think we should review this policy as a board, just offline. It's BEDH. Let's review it. And if we're going to do something differently, we need to make, we need to change the policy. But, you know, I think we can do everything we're describing here. There are some, there are some, there's some language in here around questions. And I think the problem is, and I mean, we've seen this for years, for the many of us who have been coming to these things for years, is that if you, you can step on people's time. So, when I opened it back up for 10 minutes, I actually paused when we answered. And the reason I did that was because I wanted to make sure that we still allotted the amount of time for the public to be able to provide that input. So, you get into this weird thing where it's like, well, do you pause the time or do you run it out for 10 minutes? Because if, we kind of polled people, there were three people who were interested in speaking. If we get in this big back-and-forth of Q and A, then we run out of time for the two other individuals who might have wanted to hear. So, I think we just need to think about some of the practical aspects of how you go about doing that. Can I just add, finish with one more thing, Paul? So, the other piece too, is that concept of how we can put the brakes on it. There's this, there's a, if everybody has sort of said their piece, we can table public comment.
Right.
And then, we can reintroduce.
The questions.
We can reintroduce that time that still goes to that 30-minute period, especially when we get into other items that we know are on the agenda that people are going to want to weigh in on.
Yeah.
So, that mechanism's already there.
All right. We need to review BEDH.
BEDH, public input at board meetings. It's on the, like, if you go to the website, you got the first, like, you go to board policies, you got the first bucket. The second bucket, I think, is school board governance. You scroll down a little bit, you'll get to BEDH. You say it coming up to speed on them. I think there's like 50 out there. I was going to like get them and make a nice library for myself. There's a lot. So, I wanted to give people a shortcut to get right to there.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it makes sense to respond to comments if we know the answer. That makes sense to me. And I also like pausing it if we're responding so that the public has more time. I think that also makes sense. And.
It does.
There's, there's nothing that says we can only have 30 minutes, right? So, I think even the 2020 or what are, opening it up at first, say, and then either 30 minutes if we don't think anything's contentious, or if we could do 20 and 20 if we think later on, on the agenda like tonight, people would want to speak specifically to the building committee update, then we can split it up into the 2020, still totals more than 30. And then, we can pause for response. I think that makes sense to me.
Great. So, let's add this to the agenda for next, next month.
Now, I have to find BEDH before I get on the cruise line. Thank you. I'm a paper guy anyways, that's good.
Okay. Any other business?
Oh.
New business?
New business.
We do have some new business.
Yes. So, at this time in the year, when we look at our unencumbered fund balance, we talk about items for your consideration to check off our lists. They're typically in the area of facilities and safety because, as you know, those things flex a lot. There's a lot of fluidity within that. So, we discussed a number of items that we wanted to bring to the board and discuss. So, part of that is when we had our fire inspection in the fall, it was recommended to get additional magnetized doors. I think we talked about it. We had originally cut it from next year because we were trying to reduce the budget. I'd like to propose we put it in our unencumbered funds. The next is we, is to continue on our cafeteria table replacement. So, I'd like to propose we put those back in. The leaf bucket is 20 years old. As you know, we've been welding and repairing and it's, it's on its last leg, to say the least.
What's a leaf bucket?
So, we have a John Deere tractor fill all the grounds here. And a leaf bucket is like what it all gets blown into and taken so that you can not have to worry about your, well, and it does all sorts of other things, the tractor as well. We do have a number of small paving repairs that need to be done. We have a storm drain out here that has caved in on itself. We have a couple, when there was some plowing done, they took up parts of our sidewalks. So, those things need to be replaced, so I'm proposing that be repaired. Our PA system, for those of you that volunteer in the building, Jennifer, you know this, is 35 years old. And we had a number of times that it wasn't working properly throughout this year. We had them come look at it. They no longer make parts for it as like a fire replacement, whatever that was, seven years ago. So, that's on the list. And then, the final is actually something Chris and I were to training today about reunification plans. It's another part of our, the safety task, safety task force work that we've been doing. And as you know, one of the things that we are constantly thinking about is safety. And we currently have, most of our doors have a key that locks in the hallway. And we've talked a lot about that. Or in a room like this, you see this. And then, inside the room, there's nothing. So, the research has come out about the importance of being able to push a button inside a room even if the door, even when you have a lock on the other side. Because for a variety of reasons, they get left unlocked unintentionally. So, even if your policy, which our policy is, your doors are locked, for whatever reason, you know, I go in all, so right now, our doors sometimes go up, sometimes go down because they're all different.
Right.
It's, so I might have think I relocked it when I went into Jen Hackett's second-grade room, but I didn't. So, that door was now unlocked unknowingly. And that kind of stuff happens all the time. Or I'll go to a door and it's unlocked and they're like, "Oh, my God, I thought it was locked." Right? It's not, it's part of being human with lots of different things. Anyway, so we had the training today and the biggest number-one factor is being able to slow down an intruder. Like, how do you put barriers to slow down? And one of them is this, because it's so simple to hit the button and anybody can do it. Kids can do it, adults can do it, it's very quick. And so, I talked with Rich Kane quite a bit about this. We did some research, we met with some people. And he, the proposal is us to replace the interior door locks on all the doors. There's 82 of them.
So, what does it do? Like, so if I, so say this is locked from the outside here with a key, I suppose? And we typically like to do that just so people don't go places they're not supposed to go? Is that the idea?
Well, so, if you go to our classrooms, every single one of the doors has a lock in the hallway. But inside, there's nothing.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, what we want on the inside of the classroom is a push button.
Right, right, right.
So, you would be replacing the door handle.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, there's no way, if you are in the room, there's no way to lock the door from inside?
Unless you go out into the hallway with your key to lock.
Use a key.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that seems pretty bad.
So, now, wait a minute, wait a minute. You can't, you can't just replace the doorknob with a push button. You have to replace the whole lock system.
Correct.
Right. And there's how many?
82.
And how much does each one cost?
$600. They will, they range from 500 to 900. But we met with a guy today, we touched with Rich Kane, did some research around it. So, if we were to do all of them, and is the recommendation, it's going to be going to the safety committee on Thursday, like, it is the, I mean, I take pride in the fact that SAU 16 takes safety so seriously. I feel like this board has been committed to it since my time here. And this is what's being brought as the next step that we have to be doing in our buildings. Some schools already have them. We don't. So, I'm putting it on here. We have unencumbered funds. My feeling is it should be addressed.
So, just like common sense is like, if I went, I know this is not going to be, this is not going to make sense in terms of what those doors probably, how they work. But if I went to Lowe's, I'm not paying $600 to replace a door handle. So, what makes these $600 worth special?
Well, we also have fire codes. They have to meet the fire code, they have to meet the police code there. I mean, they also have different level, like the depth of our doors is very different than a door in your home, right? So, there's just all of those factors that play into it. I mean, I could go to home, I could go to Home Depot and spend $132 on that lock, right? It's just not an option in a school. The level of hardware we have in a school is very different than a home.
Well, okay. Actually, $600 doesn't surprise me for a commercial lock. Clearly, more than one company makes them.
Correct.
And we can go out and check different sources. They're probably all within 50 or 75.
He said 500 to 900.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Well, get the fives and not the nines. Now, wait.
We've talked a lot about this, you and I.
Yeah. Okay. Now, there's 80 doors, now, these doors are. 80, eight, don't split, don't split hairs. Don't split hairs. I don't have enough of them.
Verbatim.
Okay. So, but these are, these are doors that, that are directly involved with children. Is this correct? Where, or is it all of the doors?
So, we have a number of our doors that have push bars. That is not what we would be talking about. That is different. But it is classroom doors, it is office doors. So, like, for example, my office would have one because I sometimes have kids in there. And my life is also valuable, so I would like that as well. The interesting thing, I think, one of the other aspects is we have, as you know, we have offices like in these hallways between the two grade wings and they have two doors, right? So, there is, it's not necessarily 82 spaces. Because some of them have two doors.
Two doors, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry for hogging this, but can you still unlock them from the outside with the key?
Yes.
Okay. Because we're talking about reunification. We don't want somebody like.
Correct.
In a spot locking us out.
Correct. And what's really great, one of the, one of the nice things that the gentleman talked about is that this also, because it is the same system throughout the building, you're like, it's all going to go the same way. We're all going to be able to like get into the rhythm of like actually keeping our doors locked, which is really, really important.
Key to like, like, single master keys or what's the recommendation?
Absolutely, yeah. There will be a couple of doors that, like, so there are certain doors, like the health office door, has, in my, in my office are the same and they're different from everywhere else. But the key that opens a classroom is also, is not the key that opens my door. So, there's like two different ones. There's like levels of, but all teaching spaces have the same key because we have like service providers. So, an OT is going into three different rooms and they're using the same key all three times.
The outside, the outside is a, is a handle?
Yes.
Why isn't the inside a handle?
It can be. There are options, yes. We have mix-match stuff.
Yeah. I mean, a handle is just a lot, for small kids anyways.
Way better.
Trying to grab that, that doorknob, I'd go handle on both sides.
Many of them are. Yeah. So, those were the items. The total, oh, and the new line that we discussed is not on here, the second new line.
Of the microphones or?
No, because we have to do the research on the microphones.
Okay.
So, that is something that would have to wait till June.
I call it a TV. You call it a new line?
New line board.
That's, it's a, so that's the actual brand name.
Oh, okay.
That's why I call it that.
Is there any, I mean, I don't, I don't know that we need two of those things though. Do we do?
Well, we need to see one and they need to see one.
Right. But isn't there a, like, we can talk about it later, but I'm just, I'm not in particularly particular saying I think we need two of those that go, I think.
We could have just a, so that is interactive?
Yeah.
We could look at something that's more of a monitor base, that just picks up and connects to our computer, that would not be interactive.
Right.
That's all I'm talking about, yeah, yeah.
I can do that.
So, are we, are you asking for us to approve all of those things right now?
I am.
Can, is there any way we can look at them, and the line items, and the budget, or?
So, what I can share with you is the list. They're, they're basically coming out of two line items, it's either safety and security or it's facilities, like, it would depend on the item, but they're, and I think, Sophie, the thing to think about is, you're not going to be able to look at the line and be like, does that line support it, because it's a bottom dollar budget. We have unencumbered funds at total five hundred and something thousand dollars. I'm proposing the expenditures of one hundred and twelve, six forty-five.
What's a backstop replacement?
So, we had some wild weather, some wild windy weather, and if you are familiar with our fields, we have two, like, baseball, softball diamonds, and just the arching part is now collapsing, and we need to replace it.
John Deere, wish we had keys, we don't. I'm a little bit confused about our process right now, can, like?
So you can discuss each item individually, and say, yes, you could take, like, an individual, like, yes, I support this, no, I don't, or you could look at them and holistically make a motion to approve all of them, it's entirely up to you as a board.
And then that would come out of the five sixty-six?
Yeah, we would have put it, we would attribute it to the correct accounting line, because that's part of our auditing process, but, the, because, because the school budget is a bottom dollar budget, you know you have the funds for it, it just would be, that line might be negative, or another line might be positive, and they would offset each other, because that's how your budget works.
I don't know, I guess I'm gonna, I would love to hear from Jennifer and Eric, members who have more experience about, like, how, the end of the year, like, how this flows, like, I don't feel like I have enough experience to be like, oh, well, usually we put this, but, you know.
Well, I mean, Molly obviously reported on the surplus, so there is money left over, so that, it is normal that we do these sort of capital projects. But it doesn't, I mean, we don't have to do it, but it is a normal course of events.
My, my comment is, I wanted to start, I wanted to start the, the fund for building, maintenance, and repair off with a bang. You know, I last, at the last meeting, I said, we need to fund this at fifty thousand dollars, you know, a year, and I'm thinking, as soon as I said it, I said, whoa, 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 fifty thousand dollars doesn't get you anywhere, how about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year? Okay? And I still feel that, well, this frustrates me, because I'd like to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that, that fund this year. So with that goal in mind, it's hard to argue not to do this, okay? I mean, except for those darn doorknobs, because they're a chunk of change, you know?
So the balance is what we're returning to the town? So that's, right, that's what you're balancing?
I guess I don't completely understand that.
Yeah.
So please explain it again.
Do you want to?
Molly, try, try, try it on me again, I'm a simple man.
Okay, so, at the end of every year, we finish with a fund balance, and your fund balance is a combination of your expenses less than planned, and your revenue more than planned.
Yeah, I get that.
And so, we don't have the authority to retain any fund balance, so what happens is, we have a little bit of revenue that offsets our budget, and one, and one of the things that goes to offset the budget is the prior year fund balance. So if you finish the year with the full six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars, I do not cut a check to the town of Stratum. What that says is, when you pass the bu, the budget that was just passed in the spring, sorry, yes, spring, has to raise, let's just say, thirteen million dollars, you would have to raise thirteen million dollars minus six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and one dollars.
Okay, that's straightforward, but we can't take some of that money and put that, you can't do that?
Because you have to do, you put that up on the ballot. There's a set amount that goes into that.
Oh, just like we did with, uh?
The warrant article has to be passed.
Yes, so.
So we can do, so the next warrant, the next warrant article, we could say, we want to appropriate it, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Out of this fund balance.
Correct.
Okay.
So the trust, yeah, and the trust funds are funded first, and they're funded in the order that they're put on the ballot. So if you had twenty thousand dollars left.
Oh, yeah, that was like, there was a ten and a ten, and?
There was a twenty, ten, ten, and those were going in from?
Yes, so those will come out of the fund balance before it goes back.
Yeah, because they were, they were done, yeah, okay, got it, all right, thank you, sorry for?
Yeah, so I, I don't have on here the amount that's going to the trust before it goes back, but yes, it would be approximately this amount, minus any additional spend, minus what's going to the trust.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
And, so it looks like, I'm just looking at the average return to taxpayers, is thirty, three hundred eighty thousand?
It is, but just be careful, because some of those years are the COVID years, and when we weren't in school, we, we didn't spend a lot of money, so, like, we had extra money, because, like, for example, with the buses, we had appropriated all the buses, but we worked out with first student that we would pay about half of the money, because we wanted to retain the bus drivers, so we didn't pay the full contract. We had, Tim Harrington was probably in here shutting off lights, keeping the heat at just above freezing, so it's really hard to look at those years.
Okay.
But, what people are going to feel the impact is how it compares to last year, because last year is the one that your tax rate was set off of. So, that's what people are going to feel in their pockets, is how it compared to last year.
And do you have any recommendations on how much, like, if we don't want to have another crazy increase this year?
It's totally up to the board, but, I mean, the more you give back, the more you offset in the taxes.
The more consistent you are year in and year out, the better it is for your taxes.
It stabilizes.
How does happen this year? That's what I'm trying to figure out, like, how do we divvy up these buckets?
Because we, because the board was giving back so much money for a number of years, you didn't have a choice, the building was shut down, and we got a ton of federal money, so money went back.
Right.
It made the taxes stay even, so, that was like, an actual, people thinking that it was even, it actually wasn't, it was that we were giving back way more than we typically were, so then all of a sudden, when we couldn't, because we were past the COVID funds and we were back in school full-time, we only gave back, I think, two hundred and something last year, so all of a sudden, it felt like this huge increase, but that's because we had been giving back so much before, so the more steady you keep it every year, the better it is for your residents.
I think, I just want to second, that's a very important point, that was not well-understood. We did not communicate that well at the town meeting, I don't think, we have far fewer people here at this exact moment than we did earlier in the night. I think we were like, eighteen something on the thousand during COVID years, after the COVID years, or something like that, for tax rate. Anyway, I, I know it was far less, and then you go from eighteen something on the thousand to twenty, twenty-one something on the thousand, and it, and for, for the folks in this room, like myself, I got my tax bill today, don't escrow, boom, right, you see something. So I think, to your point, it's really important, those were anomalous years.
Yeah.
But, it's still in recent living memory with the, with people who have paid those taxes.
Yeah, it's hard.
Right.
And you're blaming, and then it blames on the school, it looks like the school's on the school.
Right.
Yeah, I think we need to have another presentation, another public communication, maybe Molly and I can figure out when the right time to do this is. Like, how does the school budget impact your tax rate? Because I think that that's like, a very important topic that I don't understand, and if I don't understand it, I know other people don't understand, so, I don't know when the right timing to do that is, if we're, I don't know if we are trying to squeeze that in before the end of this year, probably not.
I think you do it during budget season.
I would say during budget season.
Okay, so let's, parking lot. Also always at the start of your presentation, I know, it's, it's part of the town budget, because the town budget is so small by comparison to the school budget, right?
But I think in your summaries that you're doing, Sophie, if we're talking about it in October, and November, and December, during the budget-building season, in your summaries, it will be included, because it's what we talk about every time, so I do think you create that knowledge base.
And I think we did start, because I remember having these conversations last fall, it might not have been to the masses, but I do remember we did have some of those conversations last fall.
And it is super confusing, if you don't live it and breathe it all the time, it's like, what are you talking about?
Super, okay, well, I will make sure that there will be a fireside chat, featuring Ms. Molly in the fall.
Great.
But yeah, okay, so back to, right now, like, I don't know, how do we have, how do we make this decision? This all looks really important, we do have a larger-than-usual fund balance, it's getting late, I don't know, what's the responsible thing to do here?
Make a motion.
I'm in favor. I mean, I don't like to spend the money, but I'm in favor, it's, it's stuff that needs to be done.
You don't do it now, you're going to have to do it anyway.
So if we do move forward with this hundred, the total is one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-five, if we move forward of that, that comes out of five hundred and sixty-six thousand, or six hundred and seventy-eight thousand?
So, it's actually going to be reflected in the top left-hand corner, in that blue box, so next month, you're going to see those as the changes, because we're going to have them encumbered with purchase orders?
Yes. I think the other thing that you're asking, Sophie, I think that we need some clarity around, we cannot spend revenue, so we can only take it out of what was in the operating budget, and that is the five hundred, the five hundred and something thousand that you're talking about, because we can, because that's funds we can access, because the town agreed to appropriate those funds, revenue is a different source, so, the six hundred is something you, you see over on the other right side, includes revenue, so if you're really wanting to think about where it comes from, it does come from that side that says five hundred and something thousand, which I don't have in front of me, but I think that, to answer your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, so it'd be five hundred and sixty-six thousand, minus the one hundred and twelve thousand, and that amount would, is the amount that would be returned to taxpayers?
No, and I'm happy to have a one-on-one lesson. So what's returned to taxpayers is the combination of your expenses less than planned, and revenue more than planned, you only have the authority to expend up to your appropriation, which is just the expense side of the house. So, that's why here, you see, right now, the remaining expansion in your board pack is five hundred and sixty-six thousand, which matches the top left-hand corner over here, the five sixty-six. That is the remaining expenses that you have the authority to spend. Now, keep in mind, there are going to be some things, like substitutes, that we don't encumber, or any unanticipated expenses between now and the end of the year, but that, the board would have the authority to expend up to the appropriation of five hundred and sixty-six thousand.
I guess, I feel like that's what I, that's not what I said.
So, but, what, to given back, the, the revenue will be given back as part of the tax rate in, on top of that?
Okay.
Trying to get you any money?
So, I think, I think for me, the fund balance has always been a tough thing for me, because, you know, especially this year, it's so, it's so large, right? And I understand what you're saying about the buses and all of that. I mean, I think that there is a budget process, and, you know, these things, there's a reason there's a budget process, and so, I guess my question to you is, I hesitate to approve it, because I like it going through a proper budget process, are there things in here that you would not, could not wait for until our next budget?
Safety stuff is hard to know. I guess my, if our, if the board's goal is to continue to be really fiscally responsible, because you're trying to put a building project through, you're not going to want to put anything in your budget next year at all, because you're, right? I mean, that would make sense, you're going to put the bare minimum, we talked, you've talked about it publicly already. So if we have an opportunity, given that our fund balance is so high, because we had money we were unable to spend, because we didn't have the buses, and we weren't able to fill positions, I feel like it's fiscally responsible to do it now, because then you're also not going like this with your taxes, and I think if we're really trying to do right by the building and the kids, I think we have to take advantage of this opportunity. I also feel like we are really thoughtful in the budget process, I feel like Heidi Hansen, who sat on the fact committee for twenty-five years, has talked about how responsible we are, and how thoughtful we are.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know that I feel like we're ever frivolous with it, I think we're really thoughtful, I think this was unexpected, to have this large of a fund balance, because we try to be as consistent as possible. So, for me, when I'm looking at that list, I'm thinking, we need to do those things, those are not things we cannot do, whether it happens today, or six months from now, or three years from now, they should be done, and none of them are going to get cheaper.
So Jennifer, I would just add too, so there is a process that could approve our budget for this year. We never know the revenue, or if we can't fill three bus routes, or, so we have a significant amount of savings, not because we didn't budget properly, but because there was unforeseen things that came out of our budget. This is a really typical request, and when Kate and I talked, there was five hundred thousand dollars that we could put in here, we didn't do that, because we wanted to be responsible of where that tax impact had, so we had a, we had a number, and this is the number we came up with, that we thought was going to meet the needs of what we want now, because if not, it will have to be in budgets at some point. You have the money that was approved by the town to budget, then you had all these unforeseen revenues that we didn't know about, which jumped our, our reserve to a higher level.
Yeah, I understand.
So that, we wouldn't recommend it if we didn't think so, but it's, it's a great conversation, and it saves you for next year's budget, that we don't have to put in a hundred and twelve thousand dollars to start out with.
Jennifer, I'm all about saving money. I'm all about saving money, but I'd like to make a motion to accept this.
Discussion, right?
Yeah.
So I tend to agree with you on the thing about the budgeting. There's a couple of things that were in there for this past time, I'm all for the safety stuff, magnetic safety doors, paving repairs, interior door handles, I call the paving repairs safety, because I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Right? PA system, I think, is, is there. I hate to nitpick, but we did already talk about these things, we made an intentional decision not to do those three, I think the safety issues, cafeteria tables, backstop replacement, leaf bucket.
Yes to two, we did not talk about the?
Backstop replacement.
That was literally wild winter storms, we didn't talk about it at all.
Can you tell me that one again, what that is?
So we have the two fields out here, we have a baseball, softball diamonds, and just the arching part.
Oh, yeah.
Wicked wild winds this winter, and they're all, like, falling down, and that is a safety issue for us.
Yes, okay.
That was brand new, that we did not have that in the fall when we were budgeting.
I understand, and I was a beneficiary of using those this past weekend.
Yes, you were.
Not that that's anything that's important, so, that's the only thing, and I know it's nitpicky, because it's like, twenty-two grand. I'm fully in support of all the other stuff, I just have this reaction to the things that we kind of agreed to.
Right.
In a, in making a different, going in a different direction. Sorry to be nitpicky.
Well, we did, we did cut those at a different, with different information, right? Not knowing that there would be this big of a fund balance at the end of the year. Like, we made those cuts when we thought that we were going to be, the budget was going to be a lot tighter.
For ne, for, really, for next year.
Correct. But I think, the point is that these things have, like, they have to get done sooner rather than later, and if we have the money now, isn't it more responsible to spend it now, as opposed to?
Opposed to return it to the taxpayers.
Returning it, and then requesting more later.
I guess when you say fund balance, it's not free money, right? It's?
Of course, right.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Eric, because I think you make a valid point of, like, we don't want to get back in the position where we are now, that we didn't do what we needed to do for thirty years, and we pushed things on. So cafeteria tables fall under that, right? So I think that there's, like, the two sides to that, like, I think, we have to do these things, we can push it off another year, or another three years, but I don't know that that's our answer, if we don't want to get in a position where we're always trying to make up for things we didn't do for ten years.
Agreed, totally.
Just thinking about the amount that goes back to the taxpayers, being as consistent as possible.
I agree.
Like, because whatever you send back, you're going to, not set yourselves up, but like, that's a conversation we have at our board all the time, like, we don't want to set ourselves up to have to match, or not match, and then have that discrepancy.
I agree, yeah, I mean, this is the minimalist, in real, all reality, but, I mean, in terms of what we would be returning, we'd be returning, like, I don't know, a dollar fifty to everybody in town, I mean, it's not a big, you know?
I, I totally agree, and I also agree that we sort of, that the budget meeting, we didn't run it as well as we could have, and I think, in terms of explanations, I think, we need to do a better job next time, I need to do a better job, but, I just think that we have to walk the walk, right? We say we're going to be sympathetic and, to taxpayers, and then at the same time, we're like, so.
So how do, but how do we be more sympathetic to taxpayers?
Like us, we're taxpayers too, but yes, how do we? These are hard decisions.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
I mean, unless there's no motion to amend.
Hmm. I'm not, I'm not going to suggest an amendment on those two items.
Sophie already seconded.
Okay. Okay, do you feel, can you vote?
Can I vote? I'm ready to vote.
Do you feel prepared to vote?
Yes, I do.
Okay, sounds good. All right, do we have a vote on the proposed year-end expenditures of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all opposed? I'm going to say aye. All abstaining, everybody? Oh, so, so that passes three to zero. Okay.
Wait, but now I want to know why you opposed it.
Oh, I think, I think that, just like I said, I think these need to go through a regular budget process. These were things voted down by the townspeople when they cut our budget in March.
What, there was, was there, like, specific public comment about those, those items?
So it was after, so they, they took our budget and reduced the, we may, am I not, is that not correct?